Good evening, and welcome to the October 22, 2025 meeting of the Lower Marion Board of Commissioners. We have three meetings this evening. We have a Police Committee meeting, a Finance Committee meeting, and then a full Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we start, please silence your cellphones. There is amplifying equipment available for those who are having difficulty hearing. The room is also equipped with telecoil technology. And later, when the floor is open for public comment, we will first take comment from those who are present in the room. We will then turn to those who are attending virtually by Zoom. If you are here in the room, we're going to ask that you use this podium to your left, and you can pick up the microphone. You have to hold that close to your mouth for us to be able to hear you clearly. We ask that you introduce yourself before beginning your comments. We're going to start this evening with the Police Committee meeting. I recognize this Chair Vice President Kramer.
Thank you, President Sinai. We have one item on tonight's agenda, and our intention is to refer that item to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting for final action. So I will now make a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners authorizing the Township Manager to make conditional offers of employment to four probationary police candidates who have fulfilled the civil service requirements for eligibility. Do I have a second? Thank you, President Sinai, and I will turn over to Superintendent Block for more information.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before this evening on the Police Committee agenda is the request, as Commissioner Kramer stated, for conditional offers. This is in line with our ongoing recruitment process for hiring the officers. Three of these officers, if the conditional officers are approved, already have the Police Academy, so they will be able to begin their field training officer program once they complete the requirements of the conditional offer. And the fourth candidate will attend the Montgomery County Police Academy, which starts the first week in January of 2026. So again, it's, we continue to move through the background investigations. As you recall, last month, we had four conditional offers that we had requested that was approved by the Board and issued by our Township Manager, Ernie McNeely. Three of the four are still here with us. One of the individuals left and went to another department before they started here. So it's a constant competition, but we continue to endeavor to fill all the ranks.
Thank you, Superintendent. I will now turn to public comment. Is there anybody in the room who would like to comment on this item?
Can you speak up, please?
Sure. Is there, is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on this item? No? Anyone on Zoom, Madam Secretary?
No one has their hands raised.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Yeah, great question by me. Thank you very much, Vice President Kramer.
Superintendent, we had some amazing statistics of the number of people who were applied and were moving on the process. May be unfair to ask you if you recall the numbers of how that worked out?
We have several spreadsheets on that. I will email it out because there's a lot of data that's involved in where it is. But when we went through the entire process, we had 71 people that were entering the background, and the long on that, the longitude on that was 724 people that originally registered to take the examination process. But we'll have that forwarded out for the Board again, so you can see the different numbers and where the breakdowns are, and how many people showed up and who didn't.
All right, very good. Appreciate that greatly. It's amazing that that 724 was a startling number, as was the 71, but we need a bigger net to go ahead and attract people.
Correct. And what we're seeing, you know, in law enforcement in general, when we give the examinations, it's usually 50% of the people show up that signed up. So if you have 700 people that signed up, if you get 350, that's about average. That's what we're working with.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other Commissioner comment or questions? I'll just say thank you again and to Command Staff, everybody who has been involved in vetting candidates and bringing forward qualified candidates as quickly as possible.
And I thank you and the Board for their ongoing support with this. It's important.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? No abstentions? Madam Secretary, that passes this unanimously. Thank you. And that concludes the business of the Police Committee.
Thank you very much, Vice President Kramer. The next committee meeting for this evening is the Finance Committee. I recognize it. Chair Mr. Zell.
Thank you very much, President Sinai. There is but one item on tonight's Finance Committee agenda. It's for the Committee to consider awarding a contract for janitorial services. To get things underway, I will move that the Finance Committee recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval to award a contract for janitorial services to Paul's Building Maintenance in accordance with proposals received on Thursday, September 18th, with the recommendation of the Chief Financial Officer and approval of the Director of Public Works in the total one-year contract amount of $385,839. Do I have a second? I do, from Vice President Kramer. I'll ask our Chief Financial Officer, Adam Chomsky, to tell us more.
Thank you, Commissioner Zellav, and good evening, Board of Commissioners. This is a contract that comes forward to you from time to time for janitorial services to our various township facilities. This was bid through our PIN bid procurement platform, and we received a remarkable 19 submissions and proposals. Partially the reason I'm bringing it to you tonight and not two weeks ago, to give the Committee time to work through all those proposals. The Committee ultimately focused on the bottom half in terms of cost and really zeroed in on the bottom five. The lowest two by cost were not selected due to a combination of reference checks, questionnaire responses, and sufficient experience in the region. The Committee ultimately focused on the awardee this evening and one other vendor, and Paul's Building Maintenance was the preferred vendor of the selection committee based on their thorough response, excellent references, and competitive pricing. The contract award tonight in the amount of $385,000 does not include the Ardmore Community Center, which is under construction. Pricing was included for that facility based on floor plans, so that if this contract is extended into 2027, we would have that pricing in hand. This is a one-year contract with option to renew across three years.
Thank you, Adam. Are there any members of the public here in the room tonight who have any questions or comments on this item? Sing Dun, Jody, are there any online who have any questions or comments?
No one has their hands raised.
Okay. So Committee questions or comments, I would just observe, as you've said, Adam, based on your very detailed memo, it's a very thorough process, and for the first time, it will include disposal of compost to the compost-specific waste stream from all of our township buildings. And so that's an important step. So with that, do other Committee members have any questions or comments? Okay. Sing Dun, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Madam Secretary. That item carries unanimously. President Sinai, a very quick Finance Committee this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zellav. With that, we're going to turn to the Board of Commissioners meeting. With the October 22, 2025 meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Lower Marion, please come to order, and all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. Churchill.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Ms. Epstein.
Here.
Mr. Gatlin.
Present.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Here.
Dr. Rossman.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Woodruff.
Here.
Mr. Zell.
Here.
Mr. Sinai.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a forum.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Let me start with a motion to approve the minutes of a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on September 17, 2025, as distributed. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Kramer. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? Madam Secretary, that carries unanimously. A few announcements. The Board met an executive session on October 8, and then again earlier this evening regarding the following matters: litigation regarding real estate taxes and other various complaints, firearms litigation, police litigation, employee benefits in leases with nonprofits. The Township will hold an open house on Saturday, October 25, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Building, which is 71 East Lancaster Avenue in Ardmore. Your agenda shows proclamations, but that is a mistake. We do not have any proclamations this evening, so we're going to turn to public privilege of the floor. Now, this is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any non-agenda items. That is nothing that, you know, a topic that we are not discussing this evening on the rest of the agenda. We ask that you use this podium. Please state your name and broadly where in the township you live. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. And if there's a group of people who are intended speaking on the same topic, we're going to ask that you appoint a spokesperson, and that person can have five minutes, but we're going to stick to the time this evening. We'll start with people in the room, then we'll turn to people who are attending by Zoom. Does anyone in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege? Please come up to this podium.
I wasn't sure if...
Yeah, just come here and...
My first time being...
Yeah, absolutely.
Were we talking about the backpack we threw?
Okay, so that will come next, because that is on the agenda. That will be in public comment. That will be next. It's a good question, right? This is for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Okay. Jody, any... Just want to make sure. Hey, Jody, do we have anyone online?
No one has their hands raised.
Okay. Okay, so then we're going to turn to public comment. This is the section of the meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items. So anything that's on our agenda for the rest of this evening, this is the point where we're going to take comment on. It's not going to get, it's not like a committee meeting where we take comment later when we're actually discussing the item. We take all the comments up front, and then later we go to the items in turn. Be aware, it's the practice of this Board that we respond to comments at the end, after we've heard all of them. And so we're going to just ask that you come up, make your comment, and then we'll just move through, and then we will turn to the people who are attending virtually. Again, the same three-minute rules in effect. If you have a spokesperson for a group, they'll get five minutes. And so anyone in the room wish to take advantage of public comment? You don't need to raise your hand. Just come up, get in line behind each other. Generally works out.
Hello, I'm Beth Mark. I live in Lower Marion, Ward 12. I'd like to speak to the gas-powered leaf blower ordinance, both from the perspective of a resident and as a psychiatrist concerned about the impact that the air pollution generated from these tools has on our brain function and mental health. The blower exhaust releases non-visible particles that are neurotoxins. We inhale them, they're transferred into our bloodstream in the lungs, then breach the protective blood-brain barrier to the brain. The particles act like a virus or bacteria. They create an inflammatory response in the brain, damaging neurons and the supporting brain cells, and they alter genetic expression critical to our mental health. It's worth spending my remaining two minutes listing the specific neuropsychiatric impacts on humans throughout the lifespan. I have resources and sources, if you're interested later, in how I got this data. Prenatal development, the pollutants cross the placenta, they interfere with fetal brain development. Exposure to these pollutants is associated with increased risk of autism spectrum disorder, lower IQ and cognitive performance, and increased risk of ADHD. Infants and young children, the developing brains in these folks are especially vulnerable to these toxins. Exposure to these pollutants is associated with delays in language, memory, and executive function, increased risk of behavioral disorders, emotional regulation problems, and higher incidence of childhood anxiety and depression. Adolescents, exposure is associated with decreased academic performance and attention, increased risk of depression, anxiety, and impulsivity, and recent research is showing a relationship between short-term air pollution exposure and spikes, and increased suicidal thinking and psychiatric ER visits by teens and young adults. Adults, long-term exposure is associated with increased risk of depressive and anxiety disorders, cognitive decline, and increased risk of stroke and vascular dementia. Older adults 65 and up, exposure linked to accelerated rates of cognitive decline, increased risk of Alzheimer's and Parkinson's disease, and increased risk of depression. So this is a problem that affects all of us, residents and leaf blower operators alike, and affects us throughout our lifespan. I thank the Commissioners for bringing this ordinance to this point and hope that an end date for the use of gas-powered leaf blowers can be set as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, to remind people, please, if you can put your phones as silent, that'll be very helpful. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Barbara Gilmore, and I have been a resident of Gladwin and Waverly Heights since the end of 2013. I've lived in several different states amid both good and bad development, and I believe Waverly proposed expansion to be bad development. I am opposed to it. The year since its origin in '85-'86 shows a trail of continuing and contentious expansion, which, if this project goes forward, I believe will result not only in overdevelopment now, but also lead to further development in the future to the detriment of the area. I have three issues of major concern. They are overcrowding, environmental degradation, and health risks. Overcrowding, there are three aspects to this: people, cars, and units. You will be told we have 270 residents, whereas the total census is around 350-plus residents, plus their many aides. I don't believe the infrastructure will support adding another estimate of 50 residents and however many aides. With respect to the number of units allowable, in 2005, the Commissioners agreed to not count assisted-living units toward the maximum allowed units per acre. We have 49 such units fitting the definition of dwelling unit. That, if counted, would put Waverly at 267 units, 20 units over the allowed number. I believe that 2005 agreement should be revisited. Environmental, the project will have a severe and permanent impact on the physical property and on the lives of us who live there. We will be losing open space, open ground, and old-growth trees, thus eliminating viewscapes from several points on campus, some of the very reasons people are drawn here. I urge you to send this project to the Environmental Council for its thoughts on the degradation it proposes. Health risks, we're told the project will take two years to complete. I believe it will be longer, considering the shortage of skilled workers in the construction industry, which never recovered from COVID years. Indeed, it is taking six months to a year or more to turn over just one unit here at Waverly. So that means years of noise pollution, construction noise being one of the worst noises affecting the health of individuals. Harvard Medical Magazine cites studies that show health effects include hearing loss, tinnitus, cardiovascular disease, memory impairment, and several other diseases. I see no effort by Waverly to mitigate the construction pollution. One would think a continued care community would be sensitive to this. I urge the Commissioners to seek Health Advisory Council advice on this. Finally, we are told that Waverly's focus is now on growth and expansion. I believe this project is opening the door to what is becoming an apartment complex in the middle of lovely individual homes. I understand this is a byright situation.
So I'm going to need you to sort of finish up your sentence. That was a three-minute timer.
Nevertheless, okay, I believe byright should not permit development that will overcrowd a property, degrade the environment, or endanger the health of residents. Thank you.
Thank you. In just one word on the three-minute limit that we impose, there are a lot of people here tonight. We want to give a fair shake to everyone. That's why when the beeper on this timer goes off, I cut you off. I'm very sorry to have to do that.
I understand that, but I am representing a couple of other people, too, who did not show up tonight.
Anyone else want to take advantage of public comment? Yeah. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is still Craig Oliver. I live with my family in Marion Station. The Township's comprehensive plan recommends measures to strengthen tree canopy and encourage tree planting through outreach and incentives. I'd like to address the current status of encouraging tree planting through outreach, vis-à-vis street trees. Encouraging tree planting through outreach. As per publicly available data on the Township's website, Bartlett's soon-to-be-released tree survey shows a 1%, 1.2% absolute, and a 2.2% relative decline in township-wide tree canopy over the 12 years of the study. With an estimated 1 million township trees, that's a loss of 22,000, or an average of five trees a day, every day, for 12 years, every day. The situation for street trees is worse. Although these right-of-way trees account for only 20,000 or 2% of the Township's total, they are arguably the most important due to their high visibility and aesthetic value. The Township is planting 200 street trees annually, but Bartlett estimates that 600 are needed to maintain canopy and the many other ecologic, health, social, and economic benefits of trees. Conventional wisdom is that the number of street tree requests is low because property owners do not want trees. Ostensibly, they don't want to rake the leaves, or they're concerned about sidewalk damage, or they're just too busy doing other things to pay attention. But based on my experience in speaking with scores of homeowners, application number is low, not because of a lack of desire, but because of a lack of knowledge. Few property owners know about the Township's shade tree program, and fewer still know that there's a way to request a tree, and that's because there's virtually no direct outreach. For many months now, I've been working with the Shade Tree Commission's staff to generate more tree requests. The first initiative is to inform those who've had a tree removed that they may be eligible for a replacement tree and about the application process. Those who lose a tree are most likely to want a new tree, potentially leading to 200 additional requests per year. The second proposal is for volunteers to distribute door hangers to property owners, apprising them the Township's street tree program and the method by which to submit an application.
So Mr. Oliver, I see you get one more sentence as well.
Okay. As the Board of As the Board of Commissioners considers the fiscal year 2026 budget, I encourage you to do whatever is necessary to mitigate canopy loss and grow trees. Grow canopy. Thank you.
And thank you.
Hi. My name is Vienna. I'm Vienna Drew Sullivan, and I live on the street, Schiller Avenue, and I live in Penn Valley, but my neighborhood's called Nervous, and I am here to tell you that we need speed bumps and stop signs so children like me can go safely across, so people don't bump into children, and they can slow down if they're going fast, and so people can stay wherever they want to go for buses, add more stop signs to be safe and follow them, and also, and also, thank you to all of you and to our community. And also, I wanted to tell you that speed bumps, they slow you down from driving because you can't fly over and make an accident in your car, and that's it, and thank you to all of you.
So we live on the block of Schiller, right behind Acme on Montgomery Avenue, between Brookhurst and Woodbine, and a lot of people, a lot of people cut through our street to avoid the lights on Montgomery Avenue and fly pretty fast. And the first block that they come to at Schiller and Brookhurst, there's only two stop signs. It's not a four-way stop, which allows people to kind of go pretty quickly down. It is the first thing. And then the stop sign on Schiller between Brookhurst and Woodbine, again, for those people that are kind of driving, trying to avoid those lights on Montgomery Avenue. Yes.
I want to say.
One more thing? Okay, one more thing.
I'm moving.
One more thing, and then we're done.
Okay. Also, I wanted to tell you all, I wanted to tell you all that, thank you to all of you, to our community, and to all, anybody.
And we have our neighbors. They can raise their hand, who are all here to support this cause.
And, um, I'm, that's what I was saying.
Say thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and, um, I'm telling you.
You gave her a mic.
Thank you. People have found a loophole around the time rule.
Hello. My name is Bob. I grew up in Gladwin, on the other side of the tracks on River Road.
So Bob, we're going to need your last name.
Weaver.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Yeah, now, I'm in Penn Valley now. So, yeah, growing up, kind of doing things myself my whole life. A few years ago, though, I bought that larger property in Penn Valley, and it's been a dream come true, but maintaining it is no small task. I care deeply about the environment. Just this year, a couple months ago, I put solar panels on my roof because I love the idea of the sun powering my home. You know, I want to do my part, but I also have a realistic view of what it looks like when it comes to maintaining my property. And I love the trees. Gentlemen, talking to me, I'm all about the trees. I have like a small orchard, so, love it. Brings me to the issue of the gas-powered equipment. I've seriously considered switching to electric tools, really have. Again, early this year in the anticipation of solar power, I tried one of my friend's Milwaukee weed whacker, and I had to go through three batteries before I was even halfway done. The following week, I borrowed a friend's, a couple of different weed whackers that his grandfather started in this township, the landscaping business like 100 years ago. So, gas-powered tools were more powerful. They got the job done faster, and I didn't have to stop in the middle of the job because I had run out of power. A couple of years ago, when I purchased this property, I bought a gas backpack blower, and honestly, it's been life-changing. Like, I lived in this two-story house now, and I climb out of the roof, I clean the gutters of like all of the twigs and the leaves, and like this mast year, there was an insane amount of acorns. So, if I, I used to do it with like a corded blower, and like just being up two stories with 200 whatever feet of cord, it's risky. At one story, you know, I might live, but two, not as much. So, yeah, the other thing is, even like the most powerful backpack blower doesn't compete to like a mid-size, like I just have like a normal off-the-shelf backpack blower, and it's amazing. I'd probably have to spend three, four times as much to get close, like not even really to the same level as what I could with what I currently have. That same friend that lent me the Milwaukee tool said he has an electric battery blower, and it drains the batter faster than any other tool that he has. So realistically, to even get close to what I currently have with my gas backpack blower, I'd have spent over $2,000, and, you know, I'd have to test them, but that same guy that, he did some testing and said that he doesn't know how he's going to do it, you know, almost all of his clients are in this township. It's going to hinder his business like a lot. Not asking you to disregard the environmental concerns, I share them with you, but I'm asking you to weigh them against the real-world impact of the ban would put on residents like me, a total ban on gas-powered blowers, but a serious strain on thousands of Lower Marion homeowners, landscapers, and business owners in this township.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the ground rule here is that we do not, come on up. We do not applaud, we do not cheer, right? First off, it will take us all night to get through the meetings, but it's also, you know, it ends up being not fair to speakers who don't get applause if other people do, right? It sort of makes for an awkward environment. Can listen respectfully to everyone. Come on in. Go ahead, Terry.
I'm Allison Trout, and I'm from Wynwood, specifically Penn Wyn. On behalf of the congregation of the Penn Wyn Presbyterian Church and the students, families, and staff of our school, we write to convey our deep and urgent concerns about the proposed opening of a smoke shop tobacco vape retail establishment approximately 35 feet from our school building. Our preschool, kindergarten, and latchkey programs serve 150 children each school day, and our church supports children, families, and the surrounding community. We respectfully but firmly ask that the Board of Commissioners impose strict conditions on any permit or zoning approval for this use, given the significant risks to children, safety, health, and educational environment, and the compatibility of the land uses in our community. Our concerns are proximity to children. These 150 children, ages approximately two and a half years old through 10 years old, are on our premises every school day. A retail business specifically selling tobacco, e-cigarettes, or vape products, opening a mere 35 feet away from the school poses a tangible risk of exposure, solicitation, marketing to minors, loitering, and increased traffic and pedestrian hazards. As a school and a childcare environment, our facility demands extra buffering from adult-oriented, high-risk retail uses. It is widely recognized that tobacco and vaping product retailers should not cluster near schools, where youth are especially vulnerable. There are health and developmental risks. The zoning land use and compatibility for public welfare. The township zoning framework states that the zoning code exists to protect public health, safety, and welfare by separating incompatible uses from each other. In the case of a retail whose core business is the sale of tobacco or vaping products, placing it at 35 feet to a school or church community is plainly a case of incompatible use. Young children, parent pickups, drop-off, traffic, school play areas, and a business model oriented towards adult and potentially vulnerable users. Furthermore, the zoning code amendment packet of the township indicates that this is a smoke shop, and it's being added as a specialized retail use under certain districts and subject to additional standards. It is legitimate for the township to apply special conditions on such uses: setbacks, hours, signage, prohibition of minors on premises and buffering, to ensure that the businesses will not adversely impact the community institutions such as our schools. In light of foregoing, the Penn Wyn Presbyterian Church and School respectfully urge the Board of Commissioners to take the following actions: Please deny the permit or zoning approval for the smoke shop at this location, given the proximity of 35 feet to a school and the attendance risks. If the approval is considered, impose strict conditions, including but not limiting to a minimum buffer zone substantially greater than 35 feet; hours of operation that exclude the times when children are arriving into party; prohibition of any outdoor display of tobacco or vaping products visible to the street or sidewalk; implantation of age verification and monitoring or reporting so the township can ensure compliance and swift enforcement of any violations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Greenland. I live in Penn Wyn, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Penn Wyn Civic Association about the vape shops. As many of you know, there will soon be a vape shop in the small retail space along Manoa Road near the intersection of Haverford Road. The front entrance of that shop will be 300 feet from the main entrance to the Penn Wyn Presbyterian Church, less than 500 feet from the entrance to the daycare at the church, directly across the street from synagogue, 500 feet from the entrance of the Penn Wyn Library, and 250 feet from the site of a new reading garden at the library. The Penn Wyn Civic Association supports the efforts of the Lower Marion Township Board of Commissioners to define significant tobacco retailers as a specialty category of retail that should be subject to increased regulation and acknowledgement of the potential harms that tobacco poses to the public health. We encourage the commissioners to establish a buffer around this category of retail to separate tobacco retailers from each other, from uses such as schools, religious institutions, and daycares, and to limit the operating hours of significant tobacco retailers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Claudine Kohick, and I'm a resident of Penn Wyn, also a mother of two little boys, 10 and 13. Well, not quite so little, 13. So I am also here to speak about the upcoming vape shop on Manoa Ave. Importantly also, I am a member of the Penn Wyn Library Board, and I speak in that capacity on its behalf. We are in acknowledgement that this shop may open regardless of any advocacy around it not opening, under current zoning, but in consideration of the proximity to church, to synagogue, to the library, to the schools. Wonder if this could be used as a case study to potentially inform future buffer zone considerations for something like a smoke or vape shop. So, in specifically regards to the library, our future garden project, which we're excited to break ground on next year, will be in full line of sight to the back of the vape shop. So it'll be a short distance from the smoke shop, and in light of that, and in consideration of the fact that we have a lot of programming specifically for youth, that will then be outdoors in the future garden, we want to ensure that there's all considerations around potential regulations, around the hours, and around the potential for loitering, and whether there can be a local effort, in light of the fact that the Clean Air Act doesn't include vaping, a local effort to really band together and consider how we can regulate the use of the products outside the shop. So recognizing that it may not be possible to necessarily block the advent of the opening of this shop, given current zoning, hope that it can be a consideration to future buffer zone regulation, to think about this as a case study. But I do wonder what the township can do in light of its upcoming opening to ensure these operational regulations and potential for loitering, because we really just don't want the youth, especially as they're enjoying the library's programming, to have a line of sight and to be subject to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Olliner, for public comment on agenda items?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Edward White. I live on Clarendon Road in Penn Valley. I'm here, once again, to speak against the proposed ordinance for the gas-powered, against the gas-powered leaf blowers. I did a bit of research, and I have a spreadsheet here if you'd like this copy, or I can email it to the board if that's what you would prefer. Summarizing it, it is very difficult to compare apples to apples. Many of the issues related to battery-powered units are that they, you can purchase different-sized batteries and chargers, and obviously, this affects the runtime and recharge time. I tried to pick units that typically came with units, with the units, and were part of the package deals. The power CFM significantly affects the performance. The noise levels are less than electric, excuse me, the noise levels for gas-powered units are greater than that for electric, but not significantly enough to address many of the issues that were brought up last week, or, excuse me, at the last meeting. And this you can see in the spreadsheet. The dust debris dependent is dependent on the CFM and mph of the blower. Gas and electric power blowers with the ability to clear lawns or township properties will be the same. The environmental impact to using the current technology may, and I stress "may," be greater with battery units than when considering the full lifestyle costs for gas versus electric, and you perform that complete analysis, given the potential cost for the production and disposal of battery-powered units. The cost for batteries, units, the cost for battery units of comparable power to a gas unit will be substantial and ongoing. For ones that generally you would meet in commercial units, it's almost $1,000 for a backpack, and they don't, I'll get into that in a second, how long they last. Although I cannot find actual numbers for some of the manufacturers on how many recharge cycles and batteries can accommodate and still perform at their design level, I did find some generalities that batteries can be recharged 300 to 600 times, with some of them more expensive, like the $1,000 units, Husqvarna 1,500 times. It is possible that, given the heavy use of the township, not to mention landscape contractors, if you recharge the batteries four times a day, you might need to purchase the lesser batteries nearly every year or every other year, and the expensive batteries every three to five years. The batteries are very expensive, and the more commercial units require multiple batteries. I agree with the Parks and Recreation Department's determination that currently the technology is not there to meet the township's needs, not to mention landscape contractors. What I heard at the last meeting was from persons who live in areas of township where their properties are smaller, i.e. Balla and Marion Station, and closer together. Their concerns are understandable. That said, my perception is that the majority of properties are larger and further apart, making the issues more impactful. One last sentence?
One last sentence.
Okay. I actually, I agree that eventually going electric is appropriate, reducing CO2 emissions is what the community should strive to achieve. Unfortunately, currently and realistically, the technology is not there to meet the township or landscape contractor's needs. This is there to meet the, it is there to meet the homeowner's needs that perform limited times on their own. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to email the?
You can give a copy to the Township Secretary, and she can distribute it to the Board.
Who's the Township?
She's in blue over here at the end of the dais. Public comment?
Hi, my name is Harper Peters, and I live near Kinwood Elementary and Balla Kinwood Middle School. I come here to.
Can you speak up? Yeah, you'll need to speak louder, sorry. Can you speak louder? You can pick up the microphone, put it right close to your mouth, we'll just restart that.
Hi, my name is Harper Peters, and I live near Kinwood Elementary and Balla Kinwood Middle School. I came here to. I came here tonight to talk about the safety of the crosswalk behind the school at the intersection of Manny Young Avenue and Greenway Lane. I'm speaking for myself, my friends, and neighbors who use the crosswalk to get to and from school. I often walk to school with my friends and I feel like we should be able to feel safe walking across the crosswalk that has been put there for us to use. We all have to walk home at different times, not only when school starts and ends, but also after sports or clubs, and many times there are speeding cars on Manny Young Road that make it unsafe. I have had a personal experience where one time I looked both ways and I was halfway across the crosswalk when suddenly a car came speeding up the hill. I thought it would stop and wait for us to finish crossing, but instead it swerved around me and my friends and it didn't stop at all. There was a traffic study done about this situation. The average daily traffic on Manny Young Road is around 1,200 cars in each direction, 439 cars in one direction and 476 in the other, in other direction. We're going 10 to 40 miles per hour over the speed limit of 25. That's 915 of the daily 1,200 going over 25 miles per hour even in a school zone. And several cars were even recorded going 50 to 65 miles per hour, which is the speed that cars go on the highway. It's hard to see cars coming from the left because it's downhill, so we look and don't see any cars, but a car might come while we're crossing. With cars going as fast as the report said, this is something that is very dangerous for walkers because the cars can come out of nowhere. From the other point of view, the walkers may also be hard to see for the drivers. We're asking for your help to make this crosswalk safer for us to use on our way to and from school. I'm asking on behalf of the walkers that you use whatever you think is best to slow down the drivers so there's not a risk of a person getting in an accident.
Hi, my name is Hannah Aaron and I'm a student at Ballack Kinwood Middle School. I have been affected by speeding cars on the crosswalk of Greenway and Manny Young Road during school hours and I'm here to help address this issue. I'm just a kid and I know that might make what I have to say seem less important, but my friends and I will come from school in these streets every day and our safety is not a game. When we are laughing, yelling, or just being kids, we might not always be paying attention to the cars that speed down our backroads. That's a risk we shouldn't have to take. Once, a couple of my friends and I were walking down the street, completely involved in an in-depth conversation about test answers or complaining about little, about how little time we have for recess as we cross the street, and we almost didn't see that car that was zooming down the road. People on the curb had to shout and yank us back from the road. The car sped by without ever slowing down. It was a terrifying reminder that drivers don't always see us and that could have serious consequences. If we could get the cars to slow down, especially during school hours, that would make a huge difference. It would force drivers to slow down and pay attention to their surroundings. The chances of a kid like me getting hurt would instantly drop. It is a minor change for the township, but a potentially life-saving one for the kids in our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. My name's John Fisher. I'm a resident of Marion Station, and I just wanted to add a recent data point to that conversation that was just brought up about the intersection with Greenway Lane and Manny Young Road. So I'm a parent of three children, all of which have gone or currently go to Kinwood Elementary or Ballack Kinwood Middle School. Last week, I was walking with my daughter to Kinwood Elementary in the morning. It was 9 o'clock in the morning. We had crossed that road, Greenway Lane, onto Manny Young Road. There was a van or an SUV, it was hard to see because it was moving very fast, and it was literally going down very quickly and went on the opposite end of the road. So it was going on the left-hand side of the road, passed not one, but two cars. It was on the wrong side of the road as it passed that very intersection that we're talking about, that walkway on Greenway Lane. So thankfully, there was no one crossing across that intersection at that point, but certainly you can imagine how catastrophic it would have been if that were the case. Even a car, you know, that would have been also a disaster if there was a car turning onto Manny Young Road. So I just thought it was relevant to come because that's a very recent data point. It was a particularly egregious, you know, event. I mean, I haven't seen that in the past, but certainly after talking to neighbors, you know, it seems like unsafe driving practices are pretty common in that area. And I think as the Commissioner and the various committees evaluate interventions in that area, it's important to realize and to recall that, you know, these walkers are young, they're inexperienced, and you met a couple of middle schoolers, but they're elementary school kids, you know, third and fourth graders who do that walk independently. They're hard to see and, you know, very inexperienced. So please, you know, consider that as you evaluate the various interventions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to take advantage of public comment on agenda items?
Hi, good evening. My name is Barbara Erskine and I'm going to talk about leaf blowers a little bit. A lot of people have covered other things, but I'd like to cover the issue about the lithium-ion batteries themselves. From a giant worldview, this stuff is mined under very negative circumstances. Lithium and cobalt, manganese, nickel, these are not easy things to get out of the earth and there's a tremendous amount of environmental damage doing that. And the batteries can last two or three years or 300 to 500 charge cycles for the smaller ones before they experience significant degradation. So if you figure each one lasts an hour and they only last 500 hours and your guy's working a 10-hour day, he's going to have to replace these every few months. And so, and even for my smaller one, and by the way, I do wear ear protection, they're not silent, the battery's $180, so that's a substantial amount of money. So putting them in landfills can cause profound and lasting damage to the groundwater as the leachate contains the aforementioned metals, but also electrolyte products like hydrofluoric and hydrochloric acids. There's a danger of fire and explosion if the lithium cell with some charge left and it is crushed or pierced, it'll short-circuit, which causes a condition known as thermal runoff that leads to combustion or explosion. They're going to be thrown in the trash. I really like my trash guys and I don't want the trash trucks to blow up or catch on fire because they're not being properly disposed of. So people, okay. Then I brushed up on my Spanish. I went around and I talked to a lot of landscapers, little guys, big guys, everything. So enacting the program would mean that they would have to buy and maintain two sets of equipment if they want to work in Lower Marion, or, and the rest of the world too. The smaller three guys said they just won't work in Lower Marion if that's the case. They can't afford it, the battery stuff and everything. The larger ones might be able to work it out because they have the wherewithal to do that, but they'd have to pass on a substantial equipment cost to the customers as well as charging for the extra time necessary to do the work due to the efficiency difference between the two kinds of equipment. Locally, there are a few places that will take these batteries to recycle, not many, so if the township imposes this, I think it should, must also offer a recycling program for people to bring these batteries back and educate them on that you have to cover the terminals so they don't touch each other because then they catch on fire or can. So the deal is, the technology is evolving. There are, there's a new plan in Oklahoma, there's one in Georgia. As it becomes more and more profitable to recycle these batteries at major recycling centers, I think that this will make sense on a large scale everywhere. Right now, I think it's a wonderful proposal, but before its time, I think we need to let the economics and technology catch up before it's imposed on the residents and landscapers of our township. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Barron. I live on Ivy Lane, just down the hill from where the Tesla burned a few years back. And so I am, I've learned a lot about the problem with lithium-ion batteries. I think the proposal as written by the township staff on, let's go with a seasonal ban and then we'll reexamine when the technology gets there, I think that's right on the money. That was exactly the right idea because the technology's not there. I started out by buying an electric leaf blower and couldn't keep up and, oh, I had to go get the gas one. It's, the technology's not there and the real problem is the lithium-ion battery. The electrolyte inside of it, the liquid, is flammable. And so you have things where if they're damaged, they have a tendency to spontaneously burst into flame. In California, they found it takes seven times the water to put out a lithium-ion battery car fire than a regular gasoline car fire. These things burn hot. They will burn even when you're putting water on them. They're really a mess. The problem is not just physical handling. If you damage it, you puncture it, now you have an unsafe battery that no recycling center on the planet wants to touch. But the problem also goes to, even if you're doing it right, Boeing still wound up with a massive grounding because the best battery company in Japan couldn't turn these things out. And as you've seen, you know, ten, 15 years of technology, we're still not there because now they're starting to have tens to, I think we're up about 50, airplane fires in the past in 2025 from these really small ones in overhead bins. Korean lost an entire airplane last year to this. Nobody was injured, they evacuated. But the lithium-ion battery is a technology that didn't quite work out the way I think everyone had hoped, and there are other technologies coming, salt, state batteries and the rest of that. So I would ask that, let's wait for the technology to be there, and I think what the township guys said was, hey, we'll reevaluate, see if the technology works. When they're happy, they will have figured out how to recharge these things because if you, I have two and I only charge them when I'm watching them, basically in the same room. Imagine if you're a landscaper that's got 40 of these things on a truck, you know, it's, you're going to have a much bigger fire problem there. So I just ask, let's wait for people to figure out how to do it. If the township wants to be the ones to do that, all the better. And once we understand how to make this work, then we could roll it out with a no more gasoline leaf blowers. But I love the idea of the seasonal ban because I think all of us can agree the yards are overblown.
And you don't need to wait for public comment. People can just sort of come here and wait till they're next in line and, you know, we can, we can keep this moving along. Come on up.
Hi, how are you? My name's Jeff Lorenz. I'm a resident of Narberth Borough and I'm the founder of Refugia. We're an ecological landscape design build. So I kind of stand in two worlds on the gas-powered leaf blower issue. And I sat through the meeting a couple of weeks ago, just as a listener, because I find it to be a very complicated situation, just even in the folks that have gotten up at the podium this evening. We're kind of all across the spectrum on various issues, various concerns from health, environmental issues, where the technology is, the cost of the equipment. One of the Commissioners at the meeting also mentioned something about, this is also an aesthetic decision to clear leaves off properties with leaf blowers is also an aesthetic decision that people decide to do with their property. So it's a complicated issue. And so in thinking about this, I just wanted to propose, in the idea of thinking about the ban and how it gets either rolled out or how it gets thought about, like, we're kind of talking around, I think, the greater issue, which is, how do we make this mutually beneficial, right? If we just wag our fingers at everyone, we're not going to find common ground. So how can we kind of find mutual benefit in this? So I did a little bit of thinking about this. And I definitely think it would be great to incorporate a rebate program, which I know was mentioned by one of the other Commissioners, I believe, at the meeting, and really thinking about how to, how to do that, and especially to incentivize the, to incentivize contractors. There's a lot of suppliers around here. Site One is a huge one for the, for the landscape supply, or like, that supplies Husqvarna, leaf blowers, et cetera. They are not going to turn down the opportunity to get in front of a couple hundred contractors that work in Lower Marion to figure out how to, as the technology advances, to be able to, to sell to those folks and maybe offer like discounted pricing. American Battery Recyclers, they work with multiple municipalities now around the country to recycle the lithium-ion batteries, so putting into, in a, an opportunity for contractors and homeowners to come back to the, to the township, if the township helps kind of create this hub to allow for this to be easier to access. And so I just kind of like dubbed this, among other things, like a green light program. If contractors and homeowners want to learn more, they can, you know, maybe they take a short information class or information session. Contractors get put on a preferred contractor directory so we know who's at least learning about this, who's, who's been, I don't want to say like a certification, et cetera, but I'll just jump ahead because I do want to just say that this could be a bigger conversation. As, as contractors, we have to, we have to permit work or ask our, the residents of Lower Marion to permit work, especially when we're trying to do stormwater work on people's properties to manage the stormwater on their properties. And if it takes months, years, costs thousands of dollars, they will not be able to go forward with initiatives that helps everybody and also helps with a kind of underutilized or undersized infrastructure for stormwater, among other things. So I've talked to, tried to talk to Paloma about this and I would love a more direct channel for that. Thank you all.
Great, thank you. Anyone else wish to take advantage of public comment?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gerhard Art. I am the owner of Sustainable Lawn Care Services, a small local business based in Lafayette Hill that serves the Lower Marion Township. Since 2020, we've invested thousands of dollars in battery-powered equipment in good faith, adapting to what we thought would be the future of quiet, more sustainable landscaping practices. However, I'd like to highlight the real-world impact of an outright gas leaf blower ban on small businesses like mine. While we've made the shift, we've found battery-powered tools simply do not yet offer the durability or performance needed for heavier-duty tasks like leaf cleanups over multiple seasons. We've seen equipment wear out quickly, two to three years, forcing us to rethink our entire service model. Instead of focusing on full-range lawn care and leaf removal, we've had to pivot to services such as fertilization and weed control where battery tools are much more adept to this because they are lighter, lighter-duty tasks, and they can be more effective. My concern is that a blanket ban would, doesn't consider the financial burden this takes on small business owners. We do not oppose to quieter, cleaner equipment. We've led the charge since 2020, but solutions, but we need solutions that support the community. For example, enforce reasonable sound ordinances that apply to all equipment equally. Consider a buyback program for existing gas equipment and financial incentives that also help to transition on a more realistic timeline instead of an outright ban. In short, please recognize the challenges small businesses face. We want to be a part of a solution that works for everyone and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please come up for public comment, if you have public comment to make.
Hello, my name is Jerry Jacobs. I live in Marion Station. I have a couple of very specific points that I wanted to share. One issue that keeps coming up in the discussion of gas-powered leaf blowers is the increased cost to residential, residential lawn services. I've systematically examined the data on seven different communities, five of which have already adopted the gas-powered leaf blower bans. Those are White Plains, New York, Maplewood, New Jersey, Montclair, New Jersey, Bethesda, Maryland, and Chetwick Chase, Maryland. And I've compared the cost of lawn services in those five communities to Bryn Mawr and to Ballack Kinwood. I did an apples-to-apples comparison. I looked at quarter-acre lots, half-acre lots, full-acre lots, weekly lawn service, bi-weekly lawn service, once-a-year lawn service, and solely fall leaf pickup. The systematic analysis that I've been able to compile suggests that there has not been a significant increase in costs in those communities that have already adopted this kind of full-year ban on gas-powered leaf blowers. I'd like to make two other points very quickly. I've done a systematic review of news articles post-adoption of bans in all of those communities. post adoption of bans in all of those communities that I just listed. And I couldn't find any evidence cited in any of those news articles about systematic evidence of price increases in those communities to residential, to residential customers. Last point I'd want to make is that in 100 plus communities that have adopted these bans, to the best of my knowledge, there have been no repeals of these bans. Some way, people are figuring out a way to make it work and I hope that we can too, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Tarlo. I live in Wynwib, Board Five. Since it's been raised this evening, I would actually like to address what are the real economics of the transition from gas to battery? According to a 2025 Consumer Reports analysis, quote, "Years ago, cordless leaf blowers were little more than overpriced novelties designed to comply with rigorous local noise regulations." But that's no longer the case. Today's battery leaf blowers can match or even beat the performance of gas models," unquote. In their rigorous independent evaluations, the top rated battery leaf blowers outperform the top rated gas blowers. For instance, the EGO LBPX 800 Battery Backpack produces about 26 newtons of force and delivers 800 cubic feet per minute at about 190 miles per hour, measures that compare favorably to gas blowers. Battery blowers offer instant start stop ability and no oil mixing or refueling downtime, so crews using them complete jobs in the same amount of time as those using gas. Cheaper fuel, maintenance and liability costs with less refueling time combine to yield big cost savings. Not surprisingly, municipalities that have enacted gas bans report the result is a lower total cost. Commercial backpack battery blowers do cost more to purchase. However, if you include, if you include battery costs, it's roughly $1,500 versus 650 for a gas blower. But it's the total cost of operations over time that tells the real story. In 2023, the University of Pennsylvania reported that fuel and maintenance savings of about $1,100 per battery, per unit, per year offset initial purchase costs within two years. After that break even point, contractors earn higher profits than from gas and total costs has decreased since 2023 as technology has improved and purchase prices have gone down. And municipalities that moved to using only battery blowers, including for large parcels, for example, in Montgomery County, Maryland, customers have not seen price hikes due to increased costs. Indeed, there are no media reports about price increases or of landscapers going out of business following a transition to battery power. A 2025 Georgetown Environmental Law Review article notes that bans, when challenged in court by landscapers, have been upheld because those bringing challenges lack facts to substantiate their claims of economic hardship. The evidence here is from trade journals, manufacturer specifications, independent research, government websites and case law. When you look objectively at the numbers, the economic picture is clear. It's lower overall costs for landscapers with battery power. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Greenberg and I live and work in Ballack Hinwood. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for the proposed ordinance that reflects their concern for the health of township residents and those who work here. I'll address this question. What about the indirect community costs of gas blowers? At the October 8th meeting, Lower Merion resident Nick Cronin reminded us that when we talk about cost, we often forget who really pays. Every resident and worker bears the indirect costs of gas blowers. Here are some facts about how air and noise pollution increase healthcare costs. Carbon dioxide, along with fine particulates and nitrogen oxides from gas leaf blowers aggravate asthma and heart disease. Those pollutants translate into hospital visits, missed workdays, damaged lives and premature deaths. And as Penn Environment has reported, our county has the worst emissions in the state. The World Economic Forum reported that health related air pollution costs United States communities $820 billion annually in economic losses. Applied proportionally to our township's population, that's $35 million per year. Yes, $35 million a year in hidden social costs borne through insurance premiums, medical bills and lower worker productivity. None of that shows up in a landscaper's invoice, but it does land on our collective balance sheet. Noise has its own price. The World Health Organization in 2023 calculated that chronic exposure above 55 decibels outdoors shortens average healthy life expectancy due to the cumulative loss toll of lost sleep, stress and cardiovascular strain. Community wide savings from noise reductions are tangible. Fewer ER visits, improved school performance, greater productivity for those working from home and higher property values because people want quiet neighborhoods. You've been hearing from some landscapers that a prohibition against glass, gas blowers will cost them money. But keeping gas blowers costs everyone. The Icahn School of Medicine at Mount Sinai in 2024 found that for every dollar invested in emissions reduction, municipalities save $5 and avoided healthcare and lost productivity costs within five years. A modest short term investment prevents exponentially greater costs over time. Protecting public health and well being isn't only a moral choice, it's a fiscally responsible one. When we reduce toxin emissions and noise, we reduce hidden taxes on everyone's health and productivity. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paulette Jelinek. I live in Haverford and have since 1975. With my strong appreciation to you, Board of Commissioners, for providing me with this chance to speak tonight, I would like to address important questions of, is the technology ready? That is, can electric powered blowers match the performance of gas? Like to allay the concerns that have been brought up by landscapers and other people about that. In short, yes, the power is there. Independent testing by Consumer Reports in 2025 and manufacturer data show battery blowers deliver 25 to 36 newtons of force, matching or exceeding commercial gas models. The Steel brand, that's S-T-I-H-L, brands BGA 300 as one example runs quietly at 26 newtons, comparable to gas machines. Battery blowers are commercial grade and according to industry reports and independent evaluators are equal to or superior to gas, as was just mentioned in produce and before Suzanne, in producing airflow while reducing operating noise and not polluting the air. Crews in Montclair and Maplewood, New Jersey complete full workdays without interruption and report fewer breakdowns because there are no engines to flood or plugs to foul. They finish their routes on time. And I'll just add that it's less dangerous in terms of fires than gas. Okay, a large volume of batteries, is it necessary? As evidence from independent sources and professional crews attest, Consumer Reports and the Montgomery County, Maryland Department of Environmental Protection in 2023 indicated that the crews operate effectively with two to three batteries per worker. Charging systems both overnight and mobile make this feasible. Do batteries last? According to manufacturer specifications, commercial grade battery packs such as the Steel AP 500S are rated for around 2,500 charge cycles, equivalent to roughly five to 10 years of daily use. EGO brand batteries are rated for 1,000 cycles. EGO batteries have three year warranties and Steel gives six years, the minimum life expectancy of their batteries. When batteries are retired, they are recyclable through call to recycle. And maybe Low Meron will also participate in a drop off program. But we already have that and it currently exists at our local Home Depot and Lowe's. The metals are recovered and reused, no hazardous waste is left behind. Some have noted, just to rush on to make my limit, some have noted that battery units weigh more than gas and that work is therefore slower and thus more expensive. The newest commercial backpack models have addressed that problem and weigh about the same as gas units with comparable power.
So that's your beep means the time.
Okay, I'll just end. It's proven economical and ready for full scale deployment. So we can all benefit today from no toxic fumes and less noise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Stanford. I live in Penn Valley. And I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about this issue that has become so important in our neighborhood. I'd like to talk about runtime, the, how to keep battery powered equipment working all day. Commercial battery packs deliver 90 to 190 minutes of continuous operation, depending on how they're used. Unlike gas blowers, battery blowers don't have to be on full blast all the time. Their speed can be modulated and often stopped completely when they're not blowing. Gas blower engines keep running, as you'll hear, running loudly, even when they're not blowing. Crews rotate change, charge batteries throughout the day, just as gas blowers are refueled throughout the day. But swapping out batteries is faster and safer than changing gasoline. There are a range of options for charging. Recharging is done overnight on standard 120 volt outlets. On the job, you use portable chargers. Charging hardware for a four port rapid charging mobile setup runs $1,000 to $1,600 per truck, including mounting and wiring costs. It's the portable power stations that enable all day charging. They average under $2,000. So that's about $3,000 to $3,500 per truck for chargers and portable power stations. Some, some landscapers also add solar panels to their systems for continuous charging. According to Montgomery County and the University of Pennsylvania, fuel maintenance savings repay these capital investments within two years. Today, with costs of batteries and charging systems coming down, the savings over time after initial investment are even greater. Reliable runtime is no longer the obstacle it was, even in recent years. Efficient batteries, rapid chargers and practical mobile charging systems mean that technology is here already and it's cost effective. Crews nationwide already use battery power successfully. We should too, to keep our community safe from the harms caused by gas blowers. And finally, there's the issue of lithium mining for batteries. It's gas, gasoline, fossil fuels after all, not lithium. That's our major environmental problem and the problem for our environment. If, if, if we're so concerned about lithium, then we should all give up our cell phones, laptops and electric, electric vehicles. They also run on lithium batteries. The obvious choice is to abandon gas blowers without delay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Marion Williams. I live and work in Ballack Hinwood. I would like to address the fears about landscaping businesses. Changes in technology are often accompanied by fears of the unknown. But there are no media or anecdotal reports from anywhere in the country of landscapers actually being driven out of business following bans on gas blowers. In places like Montclair, New Jersey, Bethesda, Maryland and Evanston, Illinois, small and large contractors alike have continued to thrive. It's simple, the total cost of ownership for electric tools is lower and customers want them. Smaller firms often start with handheld units, a few backpack blowers and switching gradually. Their fuel and maintenance savings are about $1,100 per blower, per year. Larger firms enjoy economies of scale while purchasing fleet discounts, shared battery pack banks across crews. Steel, Greenworks Commercial and EGO, these are all brands, are currently offering 10 to 20% off fleet orders and promotion of a free battery with the purchase of two. Pennsylvania's Department of Environmental Protection Small Business Advantage Program reimburses up to $7,000 for electric equipment and chargers. Some worry that large properties might be harder to service with a gas ban. Yet in Montgomery County, Maryland, where electric only crews now maintain parks and campuses larger than any here in Lower Merion, operations are running smoothly. Mobile charging hubs and quick swap battery stations allow crews to work full days without interruption. The reality is, if local landscapers were going out of business as a result of enacted bans, local news outlets would be reporting on the damage to business, the business community. We're not hearing these stories because it's not happening. If prices were skyrocketing, we'd hear about it. We're not. Lawsuits filed by landscapers and their allies after bans have been enacted tell the same story. They have failed because their hardship claims are unsubstantiated. Businesses adapt, customers adjust, communities benefit. This ordinance with its phase out period helps every landscaper, large or small, to get ahead of the curve. Ultimately, the switch to battery powered leaf blowers strengthens, not weakens, our local landscaping industry. And everyone that lives and works in our township can be safer and healthier. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Evan Mackey and I drove here in a big lithium battery from my house in Marion Station, which has a big lithium battery in its basement. I'm concerned, unconcerned about either one of them spontaneously catching fire. I am, I know this from my personal experience, having converted to electric some years ago, as well as in my professional capacity as the head of pricing for a large commercial insurance carrier. That is also how I know that the frequency of EV fires is actually 98% lower than internal combustion engines. Modern commercial batteries used in blowers are not the same as those in low cost consumer tools of 10 or even five years ago. Since 2023, all major manufacturers have certified the battery packs to UL 2271 and UL 2580 standards, which include rigorous testing for crush, puncture and overcharge. The National Fire Protection Association reported last year that professionally managed outdoor power packs show fewer than one thermal event per 10 million units of service, a rate far below that of gasoline fires from spilled or stored fuel. Just as there are no media reports of landscapers going out of business or passing astronomical costs to consumers, there are no reports of battery blower fires. It's not happening. Fire departments across the country receive standardized guidance from US solutions on safe storage and transport. Even the insurance industry, as I said, classifies battery packs as low risk when properly housed. The EPA estimates that small engine fuel handling causes more than 17 million gallons of spills annually in the US, each of fire and pollution risk. Moving to batteries eliminates that threat. They're safer. In short, when landscapers mix gas and oil for their leaf blowers and especially on sites where cigarette smoking might be taking place, this is far more combustible and dangerous. The assertion that lithium batteries pose a greater risk is not borne out by the facts. About recycling and disposal, every major car, electric battery brand partners with Call to Recycle, the national program that collects and processes over 8 million pounds of lithium battery packs each year from retailers, including our local Home Depot and Lowe's. Metals such as nickel, cobalt and copper are recovered for reuse. Plastics and are reclaimed for new casings. Nothing ends up in a landfill and manufacturers pay into the system as part of an extended producer responsibility rules. The data is clear. Certified lithium systems are safer, recyclable and long lasting, while gas remains volatile and toxic. Let's implement a policy on present day evidence and so protect the public's health as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ron Munson and I live in Marion Station. I want to thank the board for continuing to give thoughtful consideration to advancing the gas powered leaf blower ban ordinance. I want to address this evening how we can ease the transition from gas. Dozens of municipalities have successfully addressed this. Montgomery County, Maryland offers grants of $500 per blower and $2,000 for mobile charging systems. Washington DC covers up to 75% of the cost for small landscapers. Evanston, Illinois created a loan fund with zero interest for 12 months. Our township could allocate a portion of the sustainability fund or apply for state clean energy program grants to offer rebates for battery platforms and charging infrastructures. Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection's 2025 Small Business Advantage Program includes landscape equipment electrification as eligible for up to seven thousand dollars in support. The fuel and maintenance savings from shifting to battery power pay back initial investments within two years, as we've heard. With rebates, the return is faster and bigger. Some landscapers have expressed concerns about cash flow during the transition. Yes, there's an upfront cost, but it's temporary, and partnerships and support can help. Gas and oil prices fluctuate dramatically. While the cost of electricity has not only been lower, it's also been more stable. In the long run, electric tools save money and improve working conditions. Of course, it takes investment and training to ensure smart use of new technology. Our Sustainability Committee could coordinate with manufacturers like Steel, Ego, Echo, and Greenworks. They offer free information and training sessions on how to install mobile chargers, store batteries safely, train fleets and commercial crews, and more. Other free resources include learning from exemplars such as Montgomery County, Maryland, Montclair, and Maplewood, New Jersey, as well as from landscapers in our own area who already use battery power. Let's help our small businesses make the transition to create a more resilient local business community and simultaneously build a cleaner, quieter, and healthier township. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to take advantage of public comment? Public comment. It'll be the last chance, so come on up.
My name is Clancy McDermott. I've worked landscaping in this township for roughly forty-five years. Sorry. I would like to start by saying, on your public goal here today, but I think I'm going to scrap that, and I see we have a few new commissioners here today, so I'm going to get to some of the points that I need to talk about. As in reference for some of the public comment that was issued here tonight regarding about the strength in backpacks versus gas, I suggest calling the company that sells them, called Shawn Burke. One-third adequate service versus gas backpacks, regardless of price, charging stations, or whatever may be applied. They just don't work at this particular moment. So I'll go on to my points. I was going to give you a range of examples about people that work in your offices and municipality, if you took their computers for forty-five minutes a day is what you're trying to do to landscaping, what would your output of work be for the employment of the people that you serve? So landscapers will bear the financial burden of buying new backpacks, numerous batteries, retrofitting their workyards to maintain, accommodating charging stations, and increase electric cost. So who is going to pay for this? Also, will Lower Marion now have landscape trucks driving daily with large amounts of rechargeable batteries in their cargo? Is this possibly a safe hazard threat, or is the truck going to be covered by my insurance company? An example, what about the plane crash last Sunday in India that had to go out and return because a lithium battery exploded in an overhead bunker? What is Lower Marion Township going to offer the solutions for the problems that are created by this new mandate? Will they construct charging stations throughout the township for landscapers to use during workdays? Will this reduce residential costs that landscapers will now need to pass on if they have to buy and maintain their own charging stations? Will Lower Marion offer financial assistance to landscapers for the significant changeover for the gas backpacks to battery-powered backpacks? Will Lower Marion offer financial assistance for purchasing large amounts of batteries? Financial assistance for reduced productivity due to the battery-operated backpacks being less powerful? What is the mandate on the township function, including parks and regulations, school districts, and residential backpacks? This is going to cause a hardship, destabilization, the method that landscapers have conducted their work in this township as a legal way to earn a living that pertains to employment laws. This is why this is a Class A township, by the amount of work that's conducted by landscapers. I'm embarrassed to say that we have five people sitting over here, or two hundred and fifty people. I don't need to mention some of the biggest names that take care of this township. Chris Charlie Freeman hires a hundred people to carry suburban square. So why would Lower Marion create this law as it's not a state or federal law, is to appease the minority and not the majority? Before voting on these amendments, there was a commissioner last week said, oh, I think that's exaggerated by three-fold when I mentioned the price. So before you vote on these amendments, let's have a test by the gas pack versus battery. Let's see the results. Lower Marion can even consider to do a backpack test. They said it was even more powerful. Let's put it to the test.
Sir, that was the beep, so the same.
Listen, we're not picking on you. We're just saying that call the people that sell these batteries, and they will tell you at this particular date. Give you a name, guy. Shawn Burke down in Marcus Hook, he says, yeah, they're all going to get pushed, but they're inadequate to what you need. So you can go back to doing what you were doing forty years ago. But anyway, stick to my points.
Sir, I'm just trying to have time fairly for everyone. Everyone got three minutes. I gave you three minutes. I need you to wrap up.
Let me finish just one couple notes.
Okay, one sentence.
So has the township made an effort to create a meeting for the example of the people affected by these decisions who supply services to the industry that are used in the township? So another reason is, by judging by the appearance and conversations of the Township Commission last week.
Sir, I'm going to need you to stop now.
Actually, I just want to make one comment before I finish.
You're not helping yourself.
I'm not helping myself. Well, you know what? Public comment is not going to be taken into vain because of all the other things that have been done. But just the one thing I would say, there is no due process observed here. There definitely isn't.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to take advantage of public comment? Nope, sorry, just one time. Please.
Isabel Melvin, Wynwood. Good evening, Board President Sinai and my Commissioner, Sean Whalen, and Board of Commissioners. First, I want to thank you sincerely for bringing forward this ordinance to ban gas-powered leaf blowers year-round. That's real leadership. You've taken a meaningful step toward a healthier, quieter, and more livable Lower Marion. Now, I know some of us wish the year-round end date came sooner, but the important thing is, there is an end date. You've drawn a line and said the health of our residents, our workers, and our environment matters, and that deserves real credit. At the October eighth meeting, one of the speakers told a story that really stuck with me. She said her one-year-old granddaughter now imitates the sound of a gas leaf blower. Instead of what does the cow say, it's what does the blower say? That's heartbreaking, and it's such a perfect example of how much these toxic machines have crept into our daily lives. But once this ban takes effect, I truly believe, will wonder how we ever lived with them, the constant roar, the fumes gone, and in their place, cleaner air, quieter streets, and healthier lungs and hearing for all sixty-eight thousand residents of Lower Marion, including our township employees, landscapers, children, seniors, and those living with asthma or other conditions. So I urge you to vote yes tonight. Let's finish what you started. Let's give our community the peace and clean air it deserves, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and thank you again for your leadership and for putting the health of this township first.
Anyone else wish to take advantage of public comment? Come on up, it's going to be the last call. Okay, so we're going to turn to people who are online.
Yeah, I do have one individual with this, two individuals. The first person is Michael Harvey, and I'm going to throw him to the next.
Okay. Is this working?
It is. Please introduce yourself and say where in the township you live.
Yeah, my name is Michael Harvey. Putting my kids to bed. I'm in Wynwood, and I'm here to voice my, put my voice forward in favor of the noise pollution ban, of the, I'm sorry, of the leaf blower ban. I'd like to bring up just the topics that everyone else has brought up in terms of, you know, the noise, the air pollution, already in an area with a lot of air pollution, thinking about my kids, thinking about asthma, anything we can do to bring down particulate matter in the air. And these gas-powered leaf blowers just put a ton of particulate matter into the air. We need to electrify things, got to get off gas, electrify everything. I'm thinking about the future, I'm thinking about, you know, addressing global warming, and we've got to put less carbon dioxide into the air, and these things put a lot of carbon dioxide into the air. I think what many people have brought up too about democracy and who's being represented here, I have never heard people say, I love the sound of gas-powered leaf blowers. I never hear people say, I love their smell. You know, you poll people in this community, you're going to find far and away people in favor of a ban on these. And I think we can really be pioneers here in Lower Marion. If we put this ban into place, contractors are going to invest more in these things. It's going to have spillover effects into other communities, so it won't just benefit us here, it'll benefit neighboring communities where contractors will be using these electric-powered leaf blowers. And I think it's a good move for our community, and I think there's a ton of support for it. So I ask you to vote in favor of the ban, and I appreciate your considering this topic.
Thank you. Julie, who's next?
Okay, the next person is Nancy Adams.
Good evening.
Ms. Adams, if you could introduce yourself and say where you're from.
Sure, I am currently the mayor of Maplewood, New Jersey, which has been mentioned a couple of times this evening. And I'm here to just let you know that I'm here to give guidance as necessary. I did send a letter to all of you, just giving you our experience. Maplewood is a densely populated community of over twenty-six thousand residents, seven thousand homes, just eighteen miles from Manhattan. And as a member of the governing body since 2016, and now is mayor, I've led our community through the same process and wanted to share this experience. So I just want to say I've sat through the same public comments for hours and hours like you have tonight, and it's hard to believe I'm still subjecting myself to some of this now, but I care about helping others to do the right thing. We started with a pilot in 2016 that banned gas leaf blowers for the summer because there was no need to blow anything. After that, the Township Committee unanimously approved an annual restriction mid-May through September. And then when residents came to say to us, why are these dirty pieces of equipment ever good, and why should they ever be permitted? And we unanimously agreed and passed a full-year ban effective January one of 2023. So now, nearly three years later, Maplewood looks as beautiful as ever, if not better. Landscapers have adapted by mulch mowing and modifying their methods, resulting in healthier lawns and lower municipal leaf collection costs. Large properties have also learned that not every leaf needs to be blown. Nature is not the enemy. Leaving the leaves where they fall helps restore soil health, provides habitat, protects pollinators, all while reducing unnecessary labor and gas blower use, which saves both homeowners and landscaping companies money and time. So as you move forward, you'll hear familiar objections, battery equipment isn't ready yet, workers can't do their jobs efficiently, or their properties will look unkempt. None of that has proven true. Commercial-grade battery blowers are effective, durable, and improving every year. Not only that, but take a look at what actually needs to be blown. In parks, there are parks, right? These are parks. Other than pathways and basketball and tennis courts, nothing needs to be blown. And so the same is true for our municipality. So the claim that the needs are too extensive is bogus. Just do what Maplewood, DPW, and landscapers have done, and only blow what actually needs to be blown. What's needed most is your leadership and commitment to the community's health and environmental responsibility. Gas blowers have proven damage to health of residents, workers, animals, and pollinators. The question is no longer if they are harmful, it's whether we prioritize people's health over convenience and industry pressure. Maplewood has chosen to do so.
It's hard for you to hear the beep up there, but we're sort of enforcing a three-minute limit tonight, so.
Okay, so we've just chosen to do so, and we've never looked back, and I can read a book on my porch now, and life is much better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more person with their hand raised, Kevin Boudrum. Mr. Boudrum, would you please put your camera on?
Yes, I am working on that, just a minute here. There we go. All right. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Boudrum, the owner of Serenity Robotic Lawn Care, which services customers with our electric landscaping services up and down the East Coast, including in the township. We've been providing electric lawn care services for almost five years now, and from my experience, the power and performance and price of gas, of electric equipment makes it a completely viable option for commercial landscapers. You know, I'm sure you've worked to death with numbers, Newtons, and CFMs tonight, but I just want to give you from my experience, we use eight hundred CFM Works backpack blowers. And, you know, again, that's the blower that we actually use commercially, and that only costs four hundred dollars to buy brand-new. Compared to a still BR800, again, that's a type of leaf blower that a landscaper would actually use, that costs six hundred dollars. So not only are they cheaper off of that, but in total, for one crew, it costs us about thirty-five dollars a month to charge. And again, that's based on our actual experience. And so not only are they cheaper upfront, but they're cheaper to charge as well. And with all the money we've saved on gas, we've actually been able to put that money towards purchasing other batteries. So we go the whole day without charging because we just have enough batteries now that when one set dies, we can swap them out with another set. You know, in regards to power, we service, we work with golf courses as well, we do hundreds of acres, and we find that the electric equipment has the power it needs to get the job done. I think maybe one of the reasons why some other landscapers will say it doesn't is because it does, you know, there is a learning curve. I want to be fair to other landscapers. Whenever we hire landscapers, we have plenty of experience with gas equipment, they'll kill the electric batteries in a couple of minutes. But after a couple of weeks with us, focusing on retraining them, focusing on finding ways that they could be more efficient, we find they're able to go the whole day without charging. In the fall, like you heard the mayor talk about, changing your techniques to focus on mulching the leaves instead of necessarily blowing them all to the street and then sucking them up with a leaf back, you know, you'll be able to get a lot more work done with less strain on your batteries. And as long as you make those changes, you'll find that it actually is able to work. And lastly, I just wanted to touch on the fact that I feel like a lot of the people tonight who have spoken against this ban have actually said that they're open to it, just not right now. But I wanted to counter that and say that we need the legislation passed so landscapers know that a ban is coming, and that way they know that they have to start transitioning, and they have time. And as their gas blowers, you know, stop working, they can just phase them out and swap them with electric. Also, there are conversations like this happening across the country, and if we wait until other states and townships pass similar bans, electric manufacturers are not going to be as kind to landscapers. Right now, if we have any issues, even just plastic trim breaks on a blower, we can call them up, they'll send us a brand-new blower with batteries. Any issues we have, sometimes they send us stuff for free because they just want to be able to say that landscapers are using their equipment. We have the upper hand now. If we wait until it's too late and states across the country pass these bans, us as landscapers are going to lose the upper hand because they know that we won't have a choice but to purchase electric equipment. They're going to raise the prices, and they're going to make servicing this equipment much more difficult than it is right now. So I really implore you, based on over half a decade of experience using this equipment, that it is able to work, and that now is the best time to pass this legislation and assist landscapers in making that transition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Jody, anyone else online?
No one else has their hand raised.
Okay. So that brings us to the end of public comment. Um, I've been on this board for a little while, not as long as some, this is quite possibly among the most public comment that we have had. Um, I wanna thank everyone who's come out tonight and, uh, participated. Um, I don't think I've seen any topic that has spurred this kind of interest and passion about it. So, so let me turn to my colleagues, anyone wish to respond to any of the public comment? Commissioner Woodrum.
Thank you very much. So, um, I just wanna thank everyone who came out to speak on behalf of the gas-powered leaf blower ban ordinance, specifically, um, actually had a resident mine, uh, kinda called me out last time for not commenting during the committee meeting, so someone's watching the recordings, um, which is great to know. Uh, so with that, you know, I just wanna emphasize the fact that, you know, being on the Sustainability Committee, um, you know, we discussed this ordinance at length for at least a year now, um, and I'm really happy to see it come to fruition, right? And so I just wanted to thank our Sustainability Manager, Paloma, for all of her hard work on this, bringing education to us, um, and really kind of vetting through precedents and, and examples, um, and coordinating with staff. Um, so I've always kinda supported this topic, but always had the concern that we were going to end up leaving residents behind. Um, so, you know, I kinda put this out to my civic associations and to get the word out ahead of time a few months ago, and I would say the majority of the concerns that I received were the misconception that this actually applied to all lawn, lawn equipment, and I just wanted to, you know, we reaffirmed and reassured everyone that this does not apply to all lawn equipment, this is just for gas-powered leaf blowers. Um, and so, you know, with that, I continue to support this ordinance as it is amended from the committee, and, um, for further discussion, how it might be amended later in this meeting. Um, you know, and at the same time, a lot of what I heard in the committee meetings, it specifically was about the need for education, and our Sustainability Manager is more than happy to provide said education, and will pursue ways to do that for the public. Um, since the committee meeting, I've received educational opportunities from residents. And so I think it's just a matter of making sure we can walk before we run, and, and I fully support this ordinance as we, you know, have it today, and I urge my colleagues here to also support that. Um, I do wanna make a comment about, or a couple of comments about the, the traffic calming concerns, um, that came out about a stop sign, I believe, behind Acme, as well as, um, you know, the traffic around, uh, the Kenwood schools. And, um, 'cause we, we see, received several emails over the past weeks, um, and there seems to be a misconception about what the township is and is not doing about traffic calming. And so I just wanted to take a moment and again speak about, um, the ongoing efforts to revise the traffic calming policy. Uh, this was something that was really important to me, I have two young kids, share the same concerns that were stated earlier. Um, and so I brought this, this topic of interest to the Chair of the Government, or I'm sorry, the Chair of the Ad Hoc Traffic Calming Committee earlier this year, Commissioner Gavran, who helped advise me to kinda pitch this as a board priority earlier in the year, right? And so we did just that, and, um, you know, it was voted as the top concern, and that, you know, that's not a surprise, since most of us receive, um, traffic calming as our number-one concern in our wards. So I just wanted to, like, kind of again, uh, provide a little insight on the current timeline of this revised policy. Um, you know, it's still pending further review from staff, staff is still working on it, and so we really kinda wanna respect that process, and so, and, but immediately after that priority was voted on and, and kinda put it as a top priority, you know, our traffic safety unit began working on it immediately, right? They began by looking at precedent studies and, and kind of, you know, running ideas past, uh, myself and Commissioner Gavran. And so a, a draft was created in which we are giving feedback to, in order to tailor it more towards Lower Merion Township. And, you know, we're looking to, um, hopefully have rolled this out for information only, you know, I'm hopeful that it'll be out by the end of the year, but I don't wanna put a strict timeline on that. And the reason why is because, you know, we have yet to receive coordination and feedback within the township, but next on our, um, kind of timeline is receiving feedback from the Vice Chairs of the Traffic Safety, or Traffic Calming Committee. Um, like, I just wanna stress the importance of the coordination with staff, because while us commissioners can advocate how we see fit, um, and ask public to come out and speak on these topics, you know, we really need to lean on the expertise of staff and specifically more, and so, and also our engineers. Uh, you know, they're the ones studying these things, they're installing them, they're monitoring them, they're retaining them, um, and, you know, they have the lessons learned from the current policy that we have. Um, so it's my understanding that, you know, around the Kenwood schools, we, they, that roadway did not qualify for, um, speed humps specifically, but what this policy hopes to do is kind of open up that conversation of what else can be done to help address those needs. Um, so, you know, well, as an architect, I'm kind of, I have strong interest in traffic calming and the planning of the infrastructure around that. Um, you know, I know when it's best to lean on the advice of engineers and consultants, so, you know, and I offer an example of like, you know, of what could happen if we go outside the, the policy. And so if they're talking with Sergeant Cole Flash, who leads the Traffic Safety Unit, you know, I asked him specifically, like, what happens if something like misplaced speed humps get implemented outside of the policy? And, you know, he reassured me that, you know, not only could this cause delay in response times for EMS and fire, you know, poorly placed speed hump specifically could have a negative impact on, um, you know, behavior in drivers. And so what we also wanna avoid is, you know, doing something outside the policy that then could also negatively impact the area when we were intending to fix a problem rather than just push a single solution, right? So, you know, with that, I just wanna reassure the public, and I believe those who made the comments unfortunately left already, but, um, you know, there will be ample time to weigh in on this and receive more Commissioner input, um, when it's out from information only. And I myself, you know, volunteer to go to civic associations and talk more about this to make sure we're, you know, taking in that community input. Um, we also have to consider the fact that we have five new commissioners potentially coming on the board, and we wanna make sure they're educated on it, and they feel comfortable making an informed decision with this policy, because as the timeline currently stands, they would also be the ones, um, voting on this. So again, when the policy is released, I'm, I'm happy to, um, if, if those who spoke about that today, uh, wanted to shoot me an email, I'm happy to personally distribute that policy out to them, get their feedback once we are ready to release it to the public. Um, but I just kind of ask for, for patience on that, because it's not that the township's not doing something, it's just that we don't wanna have to fix it later, we wanna make sure we do it right the first time, and make sure that the staff is equipped with the resources they need to enforce it. Um, you know, other than that, um, that's everything I have to say in response to the comments. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Woodrum. And I, I should just mention one thing about what we're doing now, just for my colleagues and for the audience. Um, so right now, we're responding to public comment. We do have a ordinance on gas-powered leaf blowers to hear later, when commissioners are going to have a chance to, to make points. Sorry, you don't need to, you don't need to make that now, but we do want to answer people who have spoken. Uh, that also means that, you know, people in the audience, this discussion is going to go on for some time, but if it makes you feel any better, I'm in a Western European time zone right now for body time, so however bad you feel, it is six hours worse for me. Okay. So, Commissioner Waylon.
With that admonition, as polite and honest it was, and, um...
Jody, ready to hit the buzzer on any? I will go very quickly. First and foremost, with regard to the tree canopy, uh, our loss of it and the ability to have the, you know, street trees planted for us, I'm gonna look at everybody here, and I'm going to use everybody here as my sounding board, as we just did at the Shortridge Civic Association meeting, um, which the Indian Creek Civic also participated in. Go tell your neighbors. Everybody here, tell one more person, tell two more people, we, we will plant as many trees as we can, everyone up here agrees with this, just go spread the word. Tell everybody you can find, anybody who has street frontage, the township will put trees there if it's approved by the arborist and okay and safe. Um, so that one's the easiest one. The second one, I feel bad that it wasn't here, um, the two girls aren't here yet. Uh, my son also goes to Ballack Kenwood Middle School. Mid-block crosswalks are a major problem. I see Superintendent Block shaking his head. Uh, this is true at suburban square on Lancaster, uh, anywhere that you see a mid-block crosswalk, cars are not paying attention to them. Traffic safety will say that. We try to, as a township, do everything we can with additional signage, and even the button that you push and the lights go on, the motorists are not looking at those, and so it is not a safe, uh, place to cross, uh, you know, unless you have the crosswalk there, and it, it really is an issue, so hopefully there's more that we can do, um, but certainly agree with those two girls who came up and presented that. Um, I don't think anyone from Penwin Prez, uh, preschool's still here, but I will give them a huge shout-out quickly because I have two kids who went through that program, absolutely love it. Um, we are, I, I appreciate their thinking of using, using this as kind of a pilot program, a way to, way to look at the smoke shops. Um, we are doing that, you'll see that, you know, coming out of the township later. Um, and then finally, with regard to the leaf blowers, I will hold off from making any comments later and simply say, hopefully preemptively to everybody on the board and everyone who's still here before they leave, uh, I think we spent a lot of time and came to a very good compromise at our committee meeting, and I firmly support what we came to at the committee meeting, and I hope that we all stick to that and, you know, move this forward as we should. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ellen. Commissioner Golderberry.
Uh, first of all, with regard to the leaf blower issue, I made my news, you know, the last week on this issue, so I'm not gonna repeat anything. Uh, I do wanna thank all of you who have come out to speak on the issue, it's been very educational for all of us. Um, with regard to the, um, Mr. Fisher and Hannah Aaron and the other young student who I, whose name I didn't catch, I wanna thank you for coming down and speaking about this problem that exists on Mannyunk Road, um, and Greenway. I raised this issue, um, after a number of residents complained to me about it two years ago in November. A year and a half ago in April, um, and again in, um, I believe in June of 2024, um, I said that our policies don't meet the needs of our residents sometimes. And after a year and a half, if we don't have a new policy, even in draft form, to consider, what I asked for a year and a half ago should be done for this location, which is that we should be considering an exception to our existing policies and bring an, a motion forward to this board for consideration for an exception to the policy. I'd like to point out a couple of facts. Our policy for speed humps near the schools, or anywhere in the township, says you have to have 1,000 feet uninterrupted. On Mannyunk Road, we have 925 feet, so we're 75 feet short of that standard. The second standard, um, relates to the percentage of, um, the cars that are going, um, what the 85th percentile, you know, is with regard to the speeds. So this, the study that was done on this broke down exactly what was happening during the morning, um, between eight and nine, between 7:45 and 9:10 in the morning, and the, which is the morning time when the kids went to school, and the dismissal, which was 2:50 to 4:05 PM, when the speed limit was 15 miles per hour. And the, the, um, 85th percentile was 30 miles per hour, with 397 vehicles above 25 miles per hour in the morning. And at dismissal, it was, again, 30 miles per hour, with 322 vehicles above the 25 miles per hour. Um, so on that criteria, when you look at what the time, what, what the speed limit is at that time, it's, the, you know, the, the numbers are double what they should be. So it certainly meets that criteria. So what we're talking about for not having a speed hump here is a road that's 75 feet shorter than a policy that was not written with schools in mind and schoolchildren crossing. We need to have an exception to this policy, we don't need to wait for a township-wide policy with a new board to get up to speed on this issue. We know we have a problem at this location, and it's our responsibility to address it now. It was our responsibility to address it two years ago, a year and a half ago, and again, it's our, still our responsibility to address it now. Um, and that's all I have to say on that, I wanna thank everybody again for coming, and I'm sorry, um, President Sinai, um, for speaking too long tonight, given your jet lag.
It's quite all right. So thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Uh, any other commissioners which respond to public comment? Commissioner Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanted to speak on, um, the comments about vape shops. Um, I would like to thank the constituents who came out about that. This is something that is, um, that I've been working with the Assistant Manager, who has taken a lead for, um, several months on doing research on this. In Ardmore, um, at one point, within six blocks radius, there were about five vape shops, um, one closed, um, and, and one of the, the issues was that, that originated was that why are we having so many vape shops in such proximity, and how do we, we, we eliminate that? Um, I, I know that he's gonna write this down, um, because this is a historic moment, I wanna thank Rick Churchill, um, publicly, um, because last week, Rich, um, he, he raised an important point that I didn't consider, because my, my focus of, for my constituents was the number of vape shops in the close proximity, but he raised that important question, which was also raised tonight, about the impact of, of having those so close to schools, um, in, in education institutions. So I appreciate, um, looking at the, what we can do, um, for that. Unfortunately, um, this will not, um, what we are proposing to bring forward will not stop, um, the situation that is in that, um, that they brought up tonight. However, in the future, that we will be able to address, um, that in the future. So I'm gonna thank folks who come out, um, thank, um, Brandon and the team for leading on, on this work, leading up to this point. And again, Mr. Churchill, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Stevenson. Anyone else which respond, uh, Commissioner Gavran?
Thank you, President Sinai. Um, I wanna talk about the Mannyunk Avenue traffic issue. Um, I'm on the other end of the township, I don't know that area very, I mean, I know the area, I don't know what's going on the days in and, and the days out. Tonight, we heard a lot of comments about data and understanding the data, we heard it about leaf blowers, but it's correct, right? We should be data-driven as a board. We aren't making decisions because we feel a certain way or we think a certain way, we are making decisions based on data. We have a traffic policy, and in this case, whether it's 75 feet short, or whether it was 76 feet longer and it barely passed by one foot, we have a policy. And in, in this case, it does not meet the criteria for speed humps here, and it's not a punishment to the residents, to the schoolchildren, to say, "Yeah, it doesn't make sense to put speed humps there." It's an issue of safety, and there's a reason that policy's there. The, the comment that the policy was not written with schools in mind, I think is absolutely incorrect. This policy was absolutely written with schools, with parks, with our downtowns in mind, with safety in mind, and there's a reason that our police, our traffic safety, our public works, our building and planning teams were part of that policy and set the policy the way they did. Just because something isn't done doesn't mean it's not considered, doesn't mean it wasn't thought through, just because something was brought up to the board and we didn't take a vote on it and make an exception, doesn't mean that it was ignored for 18 months. It was considered, it was thought of, it did not meet the policy, and the, you know, the, the township decided this was something that did not make sense as is. Now, this being brought up, I think it's a great example of why we need a broader traffic safety, um, policy, because the safety policy that we have now really has turned into a speed hump policy, and it looks at more the solution than the problem. And it comes out and it says, you know, a resident saying, "I need, we need speed humps here because people are driving too fast." None of us in this room, I'm guessing, with maybe, maybe an exception, are experts on traffic policy and traffic safety. Exception, certainly at least one exception, but we are not expert, we know there's a problem, we don't know what the right solution is. And I think what's happened with our policy right now is it's a solution-based policy saying, "Here's the solution I want," rather than, "Here's the policy I want," and there's a number of things. We've talked to our township engineers, we've talked to traffic safety... We've talked to our township engineers. We've talked to traffic safety. We're talking to public works. There's a lot of people who have to provide input on, here are potential solutions to the problems that our residents are bringing up. And I'm not doubting that this is a problem. I don't know if it is. I don't know if it's not. I'm going with the data that we have because I don't live there. I don't see that day in, day out. But we need to know, here's the problem, based on what the numbers are showing. Here are potential solutions. We don't just, and we can't, as a township, start making policy based on, we really want this, you know, one of the 14 of us is bringing this to the board. This has to get voted on. That's not how we have to act as a board and as a township. So this policy has taken a while. It has taken way too long. We all agree. There are human factors. People were out for a while on injury that were really important. There's a number of departments that are key to getting their inputs. It's close. You know, as Commissioner Woodring said, you know, there are a number of next steps. But this is expected to be in front of us in the next, you know, couple of months at the latest. So we are really working on getting this policy, a better policy in place. It doesn't mean we can't look at this. And if traffic safety says, here's a good solution to this, we should do it. But we shouldn't put in a solution and start voting on solutions that do not make sense for the problem that we have. And so, you know, I'm excited, and sadly, I probably won't be on this board at the time when that policy is rolled out. But I'm excited to see it. And I'm excited to see it as a resident who cares about this township, who cares about traffic safety within this township. And I think it's going to be a really good policy and be more holistic and really helpful to the township. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gavran. Anyone else wish to respond to public comment?
Okay, I'll take a quick turn. So there's way too much to respond to for gas-powered leaf blowers. I just want to say thank you to everyone who has come out tonight, who came out two weeks ago. There's been tremendous information presented. I think there's a lot of learning that the board has done. And, you know, as we evaluate our decision on this, it's extremely helpful. And I think, you know, what we're hearing tonight reflects a lot of investment and research and effort and expertise on the part of residents and a lot of longstanding effort and service to the township and the part of landscapers. And I think there's a lot of really good voices that we have heard tonight. I really appreciate all of them. I just want to echo what Commissioner Stevenson said about vape shops in Penwind. I'm very sorry for the Penwind residents who have a vape shop near them. I think that ship has sailed. It's allowed under our zoning. There's probably nothing we can do about that. Having said that, on the, you know, agenda for later, I think we have a pretty aggressive policy for dealing with these things going forward. And I will also thank Commissioner Churchill, especially since I was not at that meeting where he brought it up, for really having the impetus for improving this a lot. And that we're going to get to see that tonight. The, and then the last thing is I also want to touch base on traffic calming. Because I agree, like, we need traffic calming by Balakinwood Middle School. We also need traffic calming in front of Marion Elementary. And I think we also need traffic calming probably around all the other nine public schools in Lower Marion School District and probably around a number of the private schools in the township as well. The existing traffic calming policy, which was passed in 2019, explicitly calls out areas near schools and parks as the places where traffic calming is appropriate. It was intended to be a traffic calming policy around schools. It was our first traffic calming policy, and therefore it had a limited set of instruments and speed humps and limited applicability because you kind of just didn't know how it was going to go. Now we have experience, and I think Commissioner Gilroy Kramer is correct. We have a responsibility to do something about these things, right? And I think that is exactly what this board is doing, which is making it its top priority in having a committee of commissioners and township engineers and traffic safety people from the police department to figure out what is the appropriate set of instruments that we could use to actually seriously address this problem. And if you govern by exception, what you end up with is a free-for-all. Because if this is 75 feet short of a, you know, of some threshold, well, you know, the school in my ward was, you know, 100 feet short. 75, 100, right? Is it 1 mile an hour under limit? Well, what about 1 and 1/2 mile under limit? What ends up happening is everyone comes and advocates for their, what they want, right? And none of it gets done, right? So the reason to go through and do the work to figure out a township-wide policy is quite actually so we can get it done, not to slow us down, okay? So I think what the board is doing is exactly the right thing when we actually take a problem seriously, which is to seriously work the problem. And I thank Commissioner Woodring and Commissioner Gavran and Commissioner Rossman and Commissioner Epstein for being on that committee and for Lower Marion Police Department, the township engineer. And I look forward to having something come forward to us that can help us really address these very important problems. They're important issues. Okay, thank you. And with that, that's going to end public comment. We will now go to the consent calendar. I am going to remove item D, which is the Chapter 155 Zoning Tobacco Retailer Law Occupation Amendments. Does anyone else wish to remove, does anyone wish to remove anything else from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to move that we approve the consent calendar excluding item D, but including the items from the police committee and the finance committee meetings that we held earlier in the evening. And that is a roll call.
For the adoption of the consent calendar as amended, Mr. Bernhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Ms. Epstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gavran.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Rossman.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Woodring.
Yes.
Mr. Zellout.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So we are now moving on to page 13 of your packet, which is item D, the item that was removed from consent, which is Authorization to Advertise Ordinance, Chapter 155 Zoning Tobacco Retailer Law Occupation amendments, Z25004. And the way I'm going to do this is I'm going to make a motion. And then I'm going to ask our assistant township manager, Brandon Ford, to kind of explain it. And then I am going to make a motion for amendment. You will see why. And then we will have discussion on the amendment and then vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion. So that's how we're going to do this. So I'm going to move that we approve authorizing the township secretary to advertise notice of a public hearing and intend to adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Marion, Chapter 155, entitled "Zoning", to amend the definitions section, to add new definitions for hookah bar and significant tobacco retailer, to amend Article 3 law occupation, to restore regulations for maximum high accessory buildings, and to permit and regulate significant tobacco retailer as a specialty retail use. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Kramer. Brandon.
Good evening, commissioners. I will keep this short and sweet. We did ask the board to take this item off of consent so the staff can make or recommend an insertion of the highlighted language that you see up on the screen that we did share with the board yesterday and as well as in front of you this evening. This would add language, which we are affectionately calling the Churchill Amendment, which was raised last week regarding the addition of a 1,000-foot buffer from between any public or private school. So the staff recommendation would be to add that language, which would add that 1,000-foot buffer. I will give kudos to Charlie Doyle, our assistant director for planning, as well as the planning staff. Staff last week was charged with looking at what the buffer would look like. Staff ran through a bunch of different options, 500-foot buffer, 1,000-foot buffer. And we've settled on our recommendation of 1,000-foot, being that not only would this be in effect, it would be in addition to that 1,000-foot buffer in between vape shops. So it's not one or the other. It would be all-inclusive. So we would look at all these different factors when vape shops are looking to come into the township. So with that, I will, myself as well as Mr. Doyle are here with any questions.
Okay, so before we get to questions for you, I'm going to just put the motion for the amendment, and then we'll have questions and comments. So I'm going to move to amend Section 2, Table 53, to add the following language as a new bullet point. A significant tobacco retailer shall be a minimum distance of 1,000 feet from any public school or private school measured along a straight line between the closest walls of each establishment. Do I have a second? I'm going to wait for Commissioner Churchill to second that. Thank you, Commissioner Churchill, for that second. Okay, so any questions for staff or comments? It was technically on the amendment, but we're going to consolidate it. Commissioner Zellout.
Thank you, President Sinai. And thank you for this work that was the result of the comments that were made a week ago. In the interim, I've learned about existing vape shops. We've heard from Commissioner Churchill about Penwind. In Haverford, there are a significant number of vape shops that are existing and very close to each other, but not necessarily that within 1,000 feet of each other. So the question was raised, is 1,000 feet enough? Or should we increase it? I suspect staff has taken a look at that, and I'd be interested in your observation, or your, you know, what your analysis found.
Absolutely, Commissioner. And that's actually the question, right? Why 1,000 feet? Not only was it, you know, one of the radiuses that we talked about last week, but we also ran it at 1,500 feet as well as 2,000 feet. And the complication you run into from a zoning and land use perspective when you go larger than 1,000 feet, you technically regulate that type of use out of the zoning districts in which they are allowed, right? So we only have a certain number of zoning districts in the township in which these type of uses are permitted. And if we make the buffer too large, that all those areas in which they are allowed are in those catchment areas, thereby they're not allowed. We regulate them out of the zoning districts in which we are permitted. And by doing that, you cause a little bit of a paradox in our zoning code whereby regulating them out of the zoning districts in which they are permitted, then they have a legal claim to go anywhere in the district, anywhere in the community. So that's why we felt that 1,000 feet gives us that maximum benefit that we were looking for in terms of keeping this adequately distant from our schools, private and public, while still allowing them in certain areas. And just to give a little bit of data, because data is a big thing, right? We estimate about 1,000 properties, give or take, are currently zone permitted to allow this type of use. Should this 1,000-foot buffer go into place, right, that 1,000 properties gets reduced down to about 300. So we would essentially reduce the area in which these type of uses would be permitted in the entire community by 70%.
So that's extremely helpful. But actually, the intent of my question was the separation that is in the code as written that we reviewed a week ago. What were, what's been proposed as an amendment, moved as an amendment, is the 1,000 buffer, 1,000-foot buffer from educational uses. You've explained that extremely well, and I support that. Does the same logic apply to the 1,000-foot separation requirement? Meaning, the distance from an existing vape shop before another one can be opened? Between, you know, a distance between vape shops and that use?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think the discrepancy here is between the locations, and it's pretty circumstantial. And I think that the reason that Brandon answered the other way about the locations outside of those areas combined, these really do limit all within these regions. I would have to look at a specific example. But honestly, like, the 1,000-foot is a general practice when we looked at the space distances between these. It could be up to your discretion, but the, these circumstances are, after looking at the examples, seem to be common practice.
Okay, I did send you examples.
See if Major McNeely has something to add to that.
The evaluation, it looked at both. It looked at both the 1,000-foot separation between the uses and 1,000 feet from any school. And the combination of those two is what really reduces it so greatly to leaving only some areas still eligible to have a tobacco.
Thank you for the clarification. That's very helpful. And that's what I was trying to understand and drive at. Because I did send you examples. So, but Ernie has answered the question. Thank you, President Sinai.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zellout. Any other questions or comments on this? Commissioner Churchill.
Thank you very much. The neighbors in Penwind were interested not only in creating a buffer for educational facilities, but also religious and daycare centers. And I know, I would like for you to share the rationale on why these other two components were not brought forward.
Yeah, so.
Or is it a question to our solicitor?
Well, I did speak, that was going to be my first part of the answer, was I did speak with Gil about this matter as soon as, you know, we wrapped up last week's meeting. And Gil and I spoke about both, you know, performing the analysis regardless of what his, you know, advice was. But he can speak on that. I can tell you what I did for the, as far as the analysis went. And when I looked at it, I initially realized that the daycares are much more omnipresent within these commercial districts because that's the only area that they're permitted. So it would de facto result in us, the analysis that we performed was not based upon existing vape shops, but potentially where they would go, right? So any zoning district, all those districts overlapped. So unless we specifically chose a district where you didn't want those uses, they're naturally going to overlap, and you would de facto prohibit them throughout the commercial areas.
I have one more question. Brandon, you addressed this two weeks ago about regulating hours. And I just wanted you to reiterate the reason why we are not regulating the hours of vape shops.
Certainly, Commissioner. Currently, the township code does not regulate the operations or hours of any other type of business in the township. So to do so for this specific type, for only an individual type of business, is problematic legally. But also, these type of businesses are highly regulated by the state. So, you know, it's a little bit of a gray area is if this board were to do it, whether or not those businesses could challenge whether we had the authority to do so. Because the state could, you know, preempt our, any code that we pass.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Churchill. Anyone else with questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to start by voting on the amendment. So this is going to be about, do we want to add this amendment to the proposed ordinance? The amendment makes a minimum distance of 1,000 feet from a public or private school. So all those in favor of adding the amendment, please raise your hand. Opposed? Absentions? Okay, so that amendment is added. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Okay, so I will now have a vote on the motion as amended. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Absentions? Madam Secretary, that passes unanimously. We are now on to page 34 of your packet, which is gas-powered leaf blowers. So I'm going to do this the same way that we did before because we also have a staff amendment. So I'm going to, it's Authorization to Advertise Ordinance, Chapter 92, Property Maintenance Gas-Powered Leaf Blower Regulations. So I'm going to move that we approve authorizing the township secretary to advertise notice of intent to adopt an ordinance, amending the code of the township of Lower Marion, Chapter 92, entitled "Property Maintenance", to add formatting of the chapter to articles and to add a new Article 3 gas-powered leaf blowers, to provide definitions for terms used, to prohibit the use of gas-powered leaf blowers seasonally in 2026, 2027, and 2028, and permanently in 2029 and thereafter, to prohibit the use of portable generators to directly power electric leaf blowers or to charge electric batteries thereof, to require that notice of the prohibition of use of gas-powered leaf blowers be posted at establishments in the township that sell them, and to provide violations and penalties for the enforcement hereof. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Kramer. Thank you, Vice President Kramer. So, once again, our Assistant Township Manager, Brandon Ford, give an explanation of this and of the staff-proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am back. And just to give a little bit of background, staff is asking that these, this board give consideration to the highlighted language that you see on the screen, that, again, we did share with the board yesterday, as well as in front of you this evening. And essentially, what this language would do, it would add to Section 92-10 regarding enforcement. As you may recall, when this was publicly discussed at the committee meeting two weeks back, there was a conversation about whether the township, who the township should really cite in terms of enforcement? Should it be the individuals who are actually perpetuating, perpetrating the use of the leaf blowers and the gas-powered generators, i.e. the landscapers? Or should the homeowners be responsible, or maybe both? So, the, the language that was added as amended essentially took out some of the language and placed the enforcement mechanism on those actually perpetrating the use of the equipment, i.e. the landscapers. The next day, we got some emails and some phone calls that led to some conversations with our code enforcement staff, who expressed a concern regarding their ability to actually enforce the ordinance should it get adopted. And that is primarily because Chapter 92 is our property maintenance code. That is for any type of property violation, property maintenance, property upkeep, grass and tall weeds, that kind of thing. And in the rest of that chapter, all the other articles as we redefine it, we hold not only the contractor, but the property owner responsible as well. So, we are asking that the board consider language that would allow the township to also hold property owners who, you know, where the property is, where gas-powered leaf blowers or these portable generators are being operated, understanding that they were first to get a warning if it's adopted as amended, that we would also be able to hold them accountable and enforce on them as well. And we did add a specific language, because we know that one of the concerns was regarding the signage provision and business owners. So, the added language that we'd like the board to consider is only for Sections 6 and 7 of the leaf blower ordinance, which is essentially limits our enforcement to the property owners to the use of leaf blowers and portable generators. It's not applicable to the whole signage requirement that we would ask our stores to put in place should this ordinance get adopted. So, with that, that is the recommendation that staff would like us to amend to this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. So, so, I guess probably the only thing that we have questions for Brandon for about the, about the amendment. So, if you have questions about the staff-proposed amendment, why don't we do that now, and I'll make the motion to amend. Commissioner Grimes?
Thank you, President Sinai. Brandon, I realize you're not a code enforcement officer, but give, let me give you a possible Staff gets a phone call, someone, there's gas-powered leaf blowing going on at a property at a time it's not permitted. Code enforcement comes out, and the landscaper is there operating a gas-powered blower, but they knock on the door and the homeowner is not home. Has the homeowner permitted the improper use of a gas-powered blower in that situation?
Again, I am not a code professional, but in my, you know, in that instance, you do have a landscaper who is using a gas-powered leaf blower. So, if this amendment is, you know, added back in, yes, that property owner would be responsible. They would, of course, get a warning first, but they would be responsible.
Right. So, thank you. So, fortunately, after years of doing this, someone answered the way I thought they might.
I aim to please, Commissioner.
This brings up my concern with what I think is a well-intentioned, sort of the law of unintended consequences. Landscaping is not like a lot of other functions that go on by contractors in people's houses. Someone is coming to work on renovations in my house. I probably know what they're going to do, because there's plans, and they've been given, we've had invoices, we've worked on that. Other things. I think a lot of people may not be home when a landscaper comes and works on their property. And landscapers should know the rules, and frankly, I'm not questioning, at least under this, that portion where the landscaper would be held responsible. But people work. They're not home. The landscaper decides they're in a hurry, and they're going to use gas that day. Under the discussion that we, that I just, the question I had with Brandon, it's possible code enforcement may find that homeowner responsible, even though they had no idea that gas was being used at their home that day, because they weren't home. And I think it's problematic. I understand that there may be a warning first, but this could happen more than once. Frankly, we have the same thing, I think, in policy with the noise ordinance. There's generally warnings first, and then citations the second time, yet there are still citations, because people still come at 7:30, and most of us know that after years of the noise ordinance, people still start at 7:00 or 7:30, even though they're not supposed to. So, while this is, you know, I'm sitting here, because this was just proposed as today, thinking, should we say, if they, should I suggest we say if a homeowner knowingly permits? But then we get into a discussion of what knowingly is, and I don't know that, I hate to use the same word in my discussion, but I think we get a little too much into the weeds on this. So, my suggestion would be not, not to include this amended language, because I think it would, while well-intentioned, it could catch people who have no idea, because they're working during the day or whenever, and, or they just don't think to look every time their landscaper shows up as to what they might be using. So, I will not be able to support this, even though I appreciate the creativity in doing, creating it. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Commissioner Bernheim?
Thank you very much. And the issue raised by Commissioner Grimes is the identical thing that crossed my mind, and appreciate the candidness in your answer, because that's the problem. You know, I hire the landscaper, I leave at, you know, 6:00 in the morning, they don't get there to, you know, some point afterward. I've given them permission to be on my property, therefore, dot, 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 does that mean whatever equipment they use, I give permission, and I have no idea what they're doing? Or do I have to sit there and say, well, you can use that lawnmower, that weed whacker, but not that leaf blower before, before I depart? I believe that where you have language of this nature, there's, within law, if something, something can become void because of its vagueness. And the concept of what constitutes, you know, permitting a violation, or as Commissioner Grimes indicated, knowingly permit, however you would tinker with it, I believe that an appropriate challenge to this may find that this section of the code void. But don't take my word for it, because I could be wrong. We have one of the best solicitors, municipal solicitors that this state has ever, ever had, notwithstanding some ridiculous letter I read earlier today, that has no idea what they're talking about. Put a smile on his face, he knows what I'm talking about. But maybe, you know, yeah.
I thought I said, oh, but I would share your concern about how this would be. And yet, there's a fairly simple solution to it, and that is, after that warning is given to the property owner, the property owner writes a letter to his, his landscaper that says, you are not permitted to use leaf blowers. And so, if he is later charged, that is, the property owner's later charge was saying that you permitted the leaf blower to be there, his response is, no, I didn't. I specifically told the landscaper not to use leaf blowers. So, I specifically have not permitted it. That is a way in which the property owner could protect himself. But the same, the same issue, though, is what do you do when a landscaper is on a property for 45 minutes, and the neighbor hears the leaf blower, right? And now the landscaper's gone. Nobody knows who the landscaper was. The neighbor only knows, yeah, somebody was there using a leaf blower, right? So, the problem of enforcement of this ordinance is, is, is clear. How are you going to catch, catch the landscaper? And how are you going to impose the liability on the, the property owner, right? So, I think what the board has to do is to say, look, we've got a problem both ways. I've offered a solution as to how the property owner can protect himself, and it seems to me that that would be a reasonable thing for a property owner to do. Tell the landscaper, you're not permitted to do it. So, if the township prosecutes him, the, the property owner produces his letter, I just told the landscaper, he's not permitted to use it. If, while I'm not there, he uses it, I shouldn't be all responsible for that.
Yeah. You're right. It proves my point, what a fine individual lawyer he is. However, with all due respect, I think that, like pragmatically, that may be what occurs. If you then envision after a warning and then some hearing, every homeowner's got, well, I told him so. Does it have to be in writing? Does it not have to be in writing? My concern, and I expressed this when that amendment that you referred to earlier was proposed, is that enforcement of this is going to be extraordinarily difficult. No matter what scenario we come up with, it's going to be hard, you know, someone goes out there, you know, whatever equipment was being used, when was it being used? Is our code enforcement going to go look into a truck for, you know, to see if they're gas-powered mowers or, or leaf blowers or, or electric? But in any event, I think this takes it one further step of making it yet more difficult, and that it's going to provide more contests, more work for all of us, and it's not going to advance the cause. If we're going to go forward with this, leave aside some other issues I may have with it, but if we're going to go forward with this, let's not make enforcement more difficult so that it, we're imposing upon homeowners yet another aspect of this that is difficult, if not impossible, to enforce. Whoever violates the, the ordinance is the one responsible for the, for the violation. In the same fashion, they're responsible for knowing what the rules are when they come and do work in, in our township. We have those at times that don't adhere to permits or don't get permits, and they are then sanctioned for that failure. The homeowner is not. The other provisions to which you make reference, as I read through it, are items that the homeowner can control. This is not one that they can control. So, I've probably jumped from question to commentary, but that'll certainly save time later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilder, Kramer? Did you still want to say something?
No.
Oh, okay.
Though I said exactly what I was going to.
Okay, sorry. I thought you were going to raise your hand. Commissioner Gavin was next.
I agree with that. We, the whole conversation has been landscaper versus homeowners. A lot of homeowners in this township do their own leaves. It's not, it's, it's sounding like everyone, this is a thing, this is just landscaper. I just want to make a very clear point, that this affects homeowners who are actually blowing their own leaves, raking their own leaves, doing whatever with their own lawn. So, it's not just landscapers versus homeowners. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Gavin. I'll go, I'll go next. So, so, just a couple of points of clarification. First is, I just want to be clear, like, this staff amendment is not a new amendment today. It is putting back language that was in there two weeks ago, that this board struck out, because Commissioner Bernheim made an amendment, because, you know, he was worried about the, the business owners with the signage, and also made the amendment to remove this at the same time, which we voted on in the bundle. But this is, this is not like something new that's showing up. We're just putting it back in. And why it was being put back in is because staff came to us the next day and said, or code enforcement said the next day, said, you know, you had an ordinance that worked, and then you took this thing out, and now we can't enforce it. Can you please put it back? Right? So, I don't think we should be overthinking this, right? This is, this is the process that got to this. Maybe Manager McNeely could comment on the difficulty of enforcing if we, you know, only could, you know, cite the landscapers?
Certainly. I mean, if this board wants us to only cite those who have a gas-powered leaf blower in their hands, and we catch them at it, then there's no need to amend the ordinance. It's fine as is. The reality is, I don't live in a neighborhood in, in the township with large lots. Landscapers generally are in and out in 15 minutes. There's no way in the world our enforcement officers are going to get around and catch somebody with that gas-powered leaf blower in their hands and actually be able to issue a citation. So, to be able to follow up in any way, shape, and form with a homeowner, which we do in a lot of other property maintenance codes, we would need to make this amendment. But if we don't want to be able to do that, then we don't want to go after the property owner for this, then our enforcement will consist of only going after those who actually have the gas-powered leaf blower in their hands and, and are actively violating the ordinance.
And just to be clear, the difficulty with the landscaper is because they don't register with the township, you don't know who they are and where they're working, and it might just be some person in a truck. And so, if you are not there at the moment, you know, you know that they're working at the property, but you don't know.
Correct.
Okay. So, so, I, this, I, this...
Go ahead.
Please. Okay. So, so, the, so I guess I will do my, my comments at this point as well. The, you know, so, so, this hasn't taken enough of my time. I've roped my 83-year-old mother into this. She, she lives in Lexington, Massachusetts, which has a van, right? So, so how do they handle it? So, during this past week, nine reports regarding the gas leaf blower bylaw infractions were made. Residents can be fined for these infractions. Please note that homeowners are responsible for all that occurs on their property. If necessary, remind your employees to follow Lexington's bylaws. This does not seem very complicated. We should just, you have the option to be able to issue the ticket to, to the homeowner. They are employing the people. They should direct their employees to how they want the, the service to be done. Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Courtney?
I'll focus just on the enforceability, since that was the supposed question here. And I'll reserve other comments for potential debate later. To me, this is no different than enforcing a noise ordinance, right? You have to call while it's happening, and someone comes out. But in reality, this is actually easier than enforcing a noise ordinance, because you can just take a picture, somebody using a leaf blower on someone else's, on a, on a property, and you timestamp it, and you'll know when it's happened, right? What I like about this amendment is, as our township manager just pointed out, it makes enforcement even easier than that. It doesn't rely on neighbors to report on each other. It enlists the help of the homeowner, the help of the person who is contracting out the landscaping with the enforcement of it. If, if I get fined because my landscaper is using a gas-powered leaf blower, now I have a lot more impetus to get my landscaper to change, or to change my landscaping service and to comply with this ordinance. I don't have a problem with that. I have a landscaping service, right? I have a gardener who comes every couple of weeks. I, I want him to use an electric leaf blower. He may not. If I get a fine for that, I understand that that's my responsibility, and I am going to consider, I'm going to change who does my landscaping. It might end up being me, and that's okay. That is, that is the purpose of this. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Anyone else with questions or comments? Commissioner Zoff, sorry.
So, today, when, well, today, the code is that you can't use a landscape, a leaf blower of any kind before 8:00 a.m. So, when there's a leaf blower at 7:00 a.m., and we hear those complaints from time to time, the police are called. And when they get there, a lot of times, that noise is no longer being made. So, then what? It's the same issue. And so, because today, you can't use a leaf blower before 8:00 a.m. weekdays and 9:00 a.m. weekends, yet it gets violated on commercial and private properties. So, how can we hold the homeowner responsible if it hasn't been witnessed? So, I don't think we should do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or, I guess, comments on the amendment? Okay. So, I'm going to make the motion for the amendment, because I'll allow a sequence. So, I'm going to move that we amend Section 3 of the draft ordinance, Section 92-10 enforcement, to add the language, quote, "or permits a violation of Section 92.6 or 92.7 of this chapter," in the first line after the words, "any person or entity who violates this chapter." Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Kramer. Technically, I'm allowed, supposed to allow discussion at this point. I don't have any takers. Okay. Good. All of those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three, four, five, six. What is that? One, two, three, four, five, eight. Okay. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, that means no abstentions, any abstentions? Okay, so the policy has been amended, eight to six. Okay. So now we have the gas-powered leaf blower ordinance as amended. So I guess this is the point for commissioner discussion on the gas-powered leaf blower ordinance. So anyone wish to make a comment? Commissioner Rossman.
Thank you, President Sinon.
Commissioner Dr. Rossman.
I apologize to you, President Sinon. I know it's now, it's three o'clock in the morning. Four o'clock. Okay, well, I'm running an hour behind. Remember, we are limiting with this amendment the use of gas-powered leaf blowers, period, by cutting out certain months and allowing them to be used other months. I've read emails both saying that technology isn't ready and that it is. One thing is certain, technology changes constantly. Setting a hard date to phase out gas-powered leaf blowers could prevent many, especially in the western part of our township, from achieving their cleanup goals. People need the freedom, people need the freedom to choose how they manage debris. Small, family-run landscaping businesses may struggle if forced to invest in electric machines now. And if the technology advances, their costs will only increase. I care deeply about health. I've developed, this is my primary goal in life, to care about the health of the human being and environmental health. And as a township, we can set an example, but we cannot improve the environment alone. Surrounding communities must act too. So I think we can set an example, but by removing the deadline, we retain flexibility to revisit this issue later without placing undue burdens on residents and businesses. Therefore, I move to amend the motion to remove the January 1st, 2029 effective date for the full gasoline-powered leaf blower ban. Go ahead.
So just to be clear. Commissioner Rossman, you're eliminating the full ban in 2029, but the move from winter, summer, to adding spring in 2028, you're leaving.
That's correct.
Okay, so it'll just be fall.
Excuse me? What are you, what are you? What, the last three words?
So he, I'm not sure what I said.
You spoke Italian. I think that was Italian.
Okay. So I was just clarifying, so he's just removing the final full year ban. Everything else in the, as his amendment, everything else in the motion remains.
So does the, because there's a spring and a fall.
The spring, the spring, the spring one he's keeping. So it will just go down to only being allowed in the fall.
May I suggest we?
Is that what you intended?
Yeah.
What's your intention?
My intention was to be okay with the spring and the fall cleanup.
Oh, okay.
Okay? My intention is the final ban that's set for January 1st, 2029, sorry, that it is eliminated. And we have, we have, well, I can say some more, but I think I've said enough.
You know, so can we, let's get to the particular page in the item, just to make sure that we all understand.
I think it's Section 926C, Commissioner Rossman seeking to strike.
I'm going to clean up this phase until 2028.
Right. So 926C, Commissioner Rossman, just to be clear, you're striking 926C, which says, beginning January 1st, 2029, and for every year thereafter, the use of gas-powered leaf blowers shall be prohibited for the entire year. Okay. I just want to be clear, you're leaving 926B, which says, beginning January 1st, 2028, and for every year thereafter, the use of gas-powered leaf blowers shall be prohibited from January 1st to October 1st each year.
Right.
Okay.
Well, wait. May I, if you don't mind?
No, you may.
Just clarifying, yeah.
Yeah, because Commissioner Rossman, are you intending to go back as far as the two windows, to what was originally proposed by staff, where there was a window in the fall and a window in the spring?
I was, yeah.
Or are you intending, which I think was President Sinon was asking, that the spring one expires on January 1, 2028? So there would be no spring one after January 1, 2028?
That's my mistake.
Which one do you mean?
I agree. I agree with originally what staff said.
Well, I said two different things.
Okay, okay. So you're, it's the eliminating, you're B and C from that section. This is why I asked the question. Yeah. Just to be clear on what you were proposing. Commissioner Zoff, do you still second that?
You're doing very good on this time zone.
Okay. Okay. So that is a proposed amendment. So now we will discuss that amendment. Anyone wish to comment on that amendment? Commissioner Whelan.
Oh, I was gonna, oh, I'm sorry.
I will do this as succinctly as possible. Certainly, I appreciate Commissioner Rossman's, you know, thoughtful consideration of this matter in the last couple of weeks, although I cannot agree with it, and I think it's extremely misguided in this instance. We went, I would say, at length, but I'll say ad nauseam, two weeks ago, debating these points. I think Commissioner Grimes had, I actually wrote it down for tonight, the best quote of the night, which was, "The one thing we can all agree on is that we can't agree on anything with regard to the gas-powered leaf blowers." And, you know, we talked about the data-driven. I think it's clear that we want an actual ban. This is not a ban if we just say, you can only use leaf blowers at the times when you would only be using leaf blowers anyway. No one's using a leaf blower in December. People don't use leaf blowers in the middle of the summer, generally speaking. And so this, you know, this ban saying, okay, you can use it in the spring and you can use it in the fall, completely guts and eradicates the fact that it's a ban. We need an actual ban. We need a hard deadline. I think I was among, at least some of this board, that wanted that deadline to be even sooner than we had agreed upon. But I think, much like Commissioner Zoff and Commissioner Courtney and I always discuss on finance committee matters, I think everyone came away a little unhappy with where we ended up two weeks ago. And to me, that means we did the right thing. We did the work. We walked through all the issues. We heard two and a half hours of commentary from public comment back then. We heard it again tonight, even more clarity, even more research. I think we know the issues, and at this point, I think it's a, respectfully, Commissioner Rossman, I think it's a huge step backwards to revert all the way back to the very beginning when we've, we'd be erasing all that work and all that effort that all of us did over so many hours, basically. And so I fully refute this amendment and can't support it and hope that we do support again. And, you know, a finality which I wasn't all that happy with, but I'm happy with that the fact that we have a real result. And I think everybody on this board is probably a little unhappy with that last one, and that would be my final point. That means we compromised, we did a good job figuring out to compromise across the township. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Whelan. Anyone this way? Okay, Commissioner Grimes.
Thank you. First, thank you for quoting me. Although you didn't quote the entire part of my speech last week, which I would have preferred. Let me say this. You know, you're right that with finance matters, people walk away a little unhappy and all that sort of thing sometimes. But this is a situation where there's a disparate financial impact of this decision on certain residents of this township, way more than on other residents of this township. Those who have a quarter acre of land can easily convert to, maybe on electric today, maybe they rake today. Easy to do the conversion, even if they stick with gas or they convert to electric. The economic difference in what they're going to be charged, or what the equipment costs them, or what they're going to be charged if they use a landscaper is different. If you own five acres, three acres, four acres, 10 acres more, you're probably not doing your own landscaping. And what we've heard tonight from landscapers, not from Consumer Reports, but people who do the work, is that it is going to take them, and we heard last two weeks ago, it's going to take them longer to do the work, they're going to need more people, they're going to need more batteries. There is going to be a disparate impact on people who own bigger properties, which they were not aware of that impact when they purchased their properties. And they're not all wealthy, and some are on fixed incomes, and I don't, you know, it is a burden that they will have that I don't believe is equitable. Now, nobody here is saying, where we do agree, and I think there's a little mischaracterization. I don't think there's anyone here who says there shouldn't be a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers when the technology is there. I don't say that, and I don't think any of my colleagues have said that. What we're, I think Commissioner Rossman is saying, and I agree with, is, let's revisit this when the technology is there and the board can act. No different from the discussion we had two weeks ago, where we said, where, I believe President Sinon, you said this, and forgive me if I'm mistaken, but let's put a deadline in now, and we can revisit it if things are different in two years. I just don't believe, I don't think setting an artificial deadline, where we, the technology may be there earlier, may be there later, but setting a deadline today of 2028 and 2029 is just that, an artificial deadline. It does burden residents. We've all heard from some of those residents. I may have heard from more than some of the rest of you, but it's real, the burden, the extra burden, and I think we should respect that. And so I would endorse what Commissioner Rossman suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, Commissioner Epstein.
I'll be very succinct. Five acres, 10 acres, 20 acres, half an acre, you don't have to blow the leaves. They're not landmines, they're leaves. I don't see the equity issue. I don't see any real issue. It's, the ecological, ecological impact, I'm sorry, it is late, of removing the leaves is negative. It is an aesthetic choice. People can choose to do it, and it might be at a greater expense, but that's okay. It's a luxury. Again, not landmines, no one's getting hurt, they're leaves. Walkways should be cleared. You do not need a gas-powered blower to clear a walkway. It is not a ban if we're just saying, do it half the year. We need to have an actual ban, and then all the stuff that Commissioner Whelan said. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Epstein. Commissioner Courtney.
Commissioner Rossman said something that is sort of gnawing at me, that, and I believe people should be allowed to do what they want with their own property, certainly within reason, but, but.
That was a positive statement.
Yes. But I don't think this blanket statement that you should have the freedom to clean up your property how you see fit. We don't let people burn their leaves, right? Why should my neighbor be allowed to use a gas-powered leaf blower that's going to be noisy on my property, that's going to pollute the air above my property, right? Every one of us, I didn't give my speech a couple of weeks ago, so I'm gonna work some of it in now, sorry. Every one of us up here took an oath to uphold the Pennsylvania State Constitution, which includes an environmental rights amendment. The people have a right to clean air, right? Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all the people, and as trustee of these resources, the Commonwealth and us shall conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all people. This is a true tragedy of the commons. There's nothing in that amendment that says, you protect the environment when it's convenient, you protect the environment when it has a low financial burden. This is exactly when your government is supposed to step in and regulate, right? Thought I had a three-minute timer going off over there. I read, I read a lot of emails over the last several weeks about this in both directions, and what Commissioner Epstein just said, I'll reiterate it a little bit, because this came in an email from a landscaper. Landscaping is a luxury that people in Lorimerian like to have, right? I have a landscaper. It is a luxury that I pay for. When I was a kid, I mowed my lawn, and I didn't have a leaf blower, and I raked my leaves. I don't like the idea of having to rake my leaves again. My lawn is a bit bigger than it was when I was a kid. I really like this luxury, but I understand that it is a luxury that I have to pay for, right? And I should pay the full cost, right? Not just what my landscaper is willing to charge me, right? I should pay the full cost of the pollution and the negative impacts that my landscaping might create. And what I really want is to not pollute at all, right? I don't want to buy carbon credits for leaf blowers. I want, I would much rather just buy my landscaper an electric leaf blower and charge me that cost, right? Let's see if I can foot that bill for you, right? We've heard from a mayor from New Jersey, whose town's name escapes me at the moment, sorry. We have heard from other economic analyses, this is happening across the country. We're not seeing huge economic windfalls. We're not seeing, like, the death of landscaping. Like, I hear way more about AI killing jobs than electric leaf blowers and battery power, right? One last thing, a direct comparison of how you currently use a gas-powered leaf blower to how you might use an electric leaf blower is like an apple store, just comparison, right? We're getting shoehorned into this idea that you have to use it for the same number of hours, you have to use it at the same blowing power, you have to do everything exactly the same. Implicit in an ordinance like this is the potential for a behavior change, right? Maybe you use the leaf blower to blow the leaves off the driveways and sidewalks, and you let the leaves on the grass stay a little bit longer. And you come back next week, and maybe you blow the leaves off the grass, so you're not using up the full battery charge, right? It's better for the pollinators to let those leaves sit there for a while anyway, right? Maybe you take your lawnmower and you just mow over those leaves on the grass and let them mulch, right? Wouldn't it be great if our lawns more reflected the natural environment, right? Nobody's out in the forest with a leaf blower. You just let the leaves fall on the ground, and they end up feeding the trees, which we also heard in public comment we need more of, okay? Last thing, Commissioner Grimes, this is not an artificial deadline. This is not a surprise to anyone. Every single one of us has been feeling complaints about this for five years now. We've been talking about this in this boardroom for five years, and every priority workshop has come up. We get public comment on it at least once a month. Hi, Ms. Melvin. And last thing, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Whelan. One thing we are very good at in this board is compromise, right? The 2-3 phase out, that's the compromise. There are people up here, like myself, who would ban leaf blowers now, right? And there are people up here, like Commissioner Rossman, who want to wait and see.
Who want to what?
Wait and see. The phase out is the compromise. I came in with a 2-4. I like it even better that we got a 2-3. It is important for us to set a goal and try to hit it. It is important to us to set a concrete signal, and that is what we are doing tonight. Thank you, President Sinon.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Courtney. Any other, Commissioner Zoff?
Thank you, President Sinon. So two weeks ago, we heard a lot of public comment, as we did tonight. And I think tonight, we heard a lot of public comment that was directed at some of the arguments made about this proposal, and then about a permanent ban. Here's what I think we do agree on, is that the report we got from our sustainability manager, a remarkably thorough report, that proposed a seasonal ban, and only a seasonal ban. I think we all agreed on that, although we never had a vote, because at the end, there was votes to amend. The vote to go, the 2-3, passed by one vote. So it's worthy of continued debate, which is what we've been having with public comment tonight and now us. So there's a difference between what many said tonight and what's in the report by our sustainability manager. Our sustainability manager and her new staff person, and presumably others in the township, did a remarkable amount of research and have been looking at this here and in talking to other municipalities and talking to contractors for quite a while. This has been long anticipated. But the report says that the electric equipment that is currently available on that is currently available on the market is not suitable to meet the needs of township equipment operators while providing the level of service that is required to meet public safety needs and community expectations. So, this report does not recommend a, setting a date in the future for a total ban. It, in fact, recommends continued evaluation. We heard, we've heard tonight about the high cost, but we've also heard that in other places, it isn't a higher cost. We've heard tonight about the disposal of lithium-ion batteries is impossible or very difficult. We've heard that it's not difficult, and there are those who will provide the recycling of those batteries. We've heard about the safety risk of lithium-ion batteries, and we've heard that there isn't a safety risk, or it's a, it's a very, very remote risk. So, which is correct. The report from our sustainability manager says one of the negative attributes of electric leaf blowers is that using, is using, is that they use lithium-ion batteries, which are resource and carbon-intensive, to produce, are hazardous to transport, and challenging to dispose of or recycle. I believe a lot of research was done to get to that conclusion in this report. So, the issue tonight is, do we set a date for a year-round ban, or do we evaluate over time? The report says it is the recommended approach that staff would reevaluate the cost and performance of electric leaf blowers after two full years of seasonal restrictions. That makes sense to me. So, we heard tonight that lithium batteries might be interim, that there might be other technology like sodium ion or solid state that needs time. That may, that may mean that that date that's been set for ban isn't practical, and maybe the problems with lithium-ion batteries are going to occur, as contractors and others have said they will. Now, I said, I said two weeks ago, we need to, we're the only one looking at this right now in Pennsylvania, and we need to work with the neighboring municipalities. There was a municipality that did give this a shot recently, that's Swarthmore, and they, after a lot of public comment, probably more than two meetings, tabled it, and it hasn't come back. So, and I'm not suggesting that we table it. I'm suggesting we adopt what was proposed. Let's see if other municipalities enact the seasonal ban that has been proposed, and I believe all of us support. Let, I hope they do, and if they follow our lead in doing so, and then we're going to evaluate, and then at some point, when we know more from experience, I think we'll be setting a date for a seasonal ban. I just don't think we should do it now. The amended proposal has turned what was, is a very good idea and into, I think, a premature total ban. So, I think we should proceed with the original proposal for a seasonal ban and not set a total ban date today. And one more comment. We heard twice from Sustainable Landscaping Services Company. What they do is in the name of their company. We heard from the owner how much difficulty he's had, yet we also heard from him that he wants to get to the goal that we are talking about, which is a total ban, but he doesn't think we're ready to get there. This is what he does. And so, I think that we have to take the time to see what actually will occur with the experience of the seasonal ban. Thank you, President Sinai.
Thank you, Commissioner Zoff. Commissioner Bernhardt.
Thank you very much, President Sinai. And I'll, I'll try to be brief and not go into territory that anybody else has, and, you know, I had like point-counterpoint, you know, on both ends of these, you know, articulated, you know, very well. But there are a couple of other items of data or information I want to bring forward for the consideration of this. No one will be surprised if it has a little legal bent to it. So, the town that you were thinking of before Commissioner Courtney was Montclair. And in Montclair, which is in New Jersey, one of the issues that was raised in a challenge, and we just back up, somebody else made a comment that lawsuits, there were no lawsuits where it showed that there had been economic loss to landowners. Well, that's not the basis upon which any lawsuits would be brought. That may be why they didn't find that. But what was brought in connection with Montclair was whether that constant, whether the ordinance constitutes what's known as a taking, which the U.S. Constitution, as well as the Pennsylvania Constitution, which would be part of that oath that you referenced before, doesn't permit. Think of as an example where there's eminent domain, and we go forward and decide to take property, we have to pay fair value for it, all right? So, the decision that came out of the New Jersey federal court, which would not bind Pennsylvania, it would certainly be something they would look at, indicated that it wasn't a taking, and balanced that because there was, there remained the ability for, an economic benefit for their gas-powered leaf blowers by utilizing them outside of Montclair or selling them. I may disagree with that as a rationale to overcome the concept of a taking, but I bring that up because the economic issue is one that we need to take hold of. And there are two other municipalities, after passing bans on gas-powered leaf blowers, that recognize this is creating an economic hardship. And so, in Evanston, Illinois, and Montgomery County, Maryland, they put a pause into their statutes. And in Evanston, the, the reason was because the hardship to the smaller landscaping companies, and what they tried to do was then find sources for rebates, ways to compensate the landscapers, so they could then go forward with the ordinance. And in Montgomery County, they had an entire rebate program, some of it through the EPA, in order to help out with this, because the cost was significant in light of the fact of the additional requirements in order to try to equal out the difference between the efficiency of the gas power and the efficiency of the electric leaf blowers, leave aside any environmental or noise concerns. Consequently, the motion that's made by Commissioner Rossman has some merit to it, because as opposed to taking the viewpoint that we wait a couple of years and have some future board correct a mistake if we're making one, if we don't put that in an ordinance now, and we allow to determine what the technology will provide, and what we can do to offset what will be an economic difference to best, especially small businesses, that is something that makes sense for a much larger community. And that otherwise, we are placing certain burdens on folks for the need to make alternate arrangements at an, clearly an economic cost, without knowing whether the technology will be where we want it to be in several years from now. There's no harm in saying fine in the same fashion that we would think some future board may correct an error, that we put upon some future board to take the next step, if indeed is appropriate. To say that we're going to rely upon a future board as a safety net if we're making a mistake, I submit it's not the way that one would conduct legislation. There are a lot of aspirations from this. President Sinai had visions of, you know, people now just being with rakes. I don't think that's going to happen, any more than we're going to get rabbit ears and rotary phones back. I think that the power tools are here to stay, one way, one way or another, and we need to recognize that with an element of reality. So, I believe that the motion that has been made by Commissioner Rossman makes a lot of sense. It is a compromise from what was set forth in the original memo that we had, but it allows a future board to make a determination on data and not speculation and aspirations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernhardt. Commissioner Yoder Bremer.
The environmental health and quality of life issues, in my mind, override all of these concerns, and I fully support the legislation as currently written and oppose Commissioner Rossman's proposed amendment.
Thank you. So, Commissioner Rossman, you've already gone. So, anyone else? Okay, so I do to make some comments. I first want to, to address, you know, some of the concerns that, you motivated Commissioner Rossman to make his amendment, and I think one of the things that he mentioned was that, you know, removing the deadline, you know, the phase-out in the, in the ban, those dates, would increase flexibility. I see it the opposite way. I think it removes flexibility. And here's why. The original motivation for putting in this path for what, you know, is going to come down the pike, is to give residents and businesses a clear expectation of what could come forward, so they can invest appropriately. Because as we've heard, we're asking people to invest. Like, I believe that the cost of use and cost of ownership of the electric equipment over its lifetime is less than of gas, but I agree that the upfront cost is perhaps higher than the gas equipment. It's the operating cost going forward that brings the average down. And so we're asking people to make an investment. We're asking them to make an investment in the, you know, interests of the health of the area, of the environmental benefits, and of the welfare through quality of life. The way that the ordinance is currently structured with a, you know, winter, summer ban originally, and then phasing in, spring and phasing out fall, gives people the flexibility to not get much equipment initially, right? Because initially, the heavy leaf seasons, you're allowed to use your existing gas-powered equipment. And so, you, you get to dip your toe in the water for the electric equipment for a couple of years, right? You, if what we have is just a partial, you know, winter, summer ban, then the equipment people are going to buy is going to be just designed to accommodate those very low leaf seasons, right? There are not going to be equipment that can accommodate the higher leaf seasons. It'll be the low leaf seasons, right? And so, and so what will happen a couple of years down the pike, if we say, okay, well, now we're going to go to a full ban, we will have residents coming up and say, I just bought new electric equipment because you guys told us that we only needed to use it in the winter and summer. And now I need to go out and get new equipment, because you're now telling me I can't use it in the spring, or you're now telling me I can't use it in the fall, and I didn't expect that. I didn't know that, and I'm going to have to reinvest all over again, right? You have to telegraph to people, this is what you should expect. This is what you should plan for, right? So, so now, is this constraining future boards? Well, you know, Evanston, Illinois was brought up in their great example. They did exactly this, except they're about, you know, several years ahead of us. So, it was April 2023 when their predetermined band date in their ordinance was coming up. And that board said, okay, well, let's have a hearing before this date kicks in, and say, do we want to stick with it? And in 2023, they went through these hearings, and they said, yes, we do, but they had the flexibility and the ability to make that decision, but everyone had fair warning going up to them that that's what they should expect, right? And instead, if we don't do that, what this is saying is saying, we really are just not interested in, in expanding this ban, because you, this just rolls forward, right? Until, you know, at some point, perhaps the market is such, electric leaf blowers are the only things you can buy, or probably get to that point at some point, we're just trying to, to, to do this event. You get more flexibility by giving people guidance and unwinding it than locking yourself into not telling people you're going to do it, and then having them be surprised later. The second is, and I think other communities have shown that you can indeed, you revisit this later. The second is, is, you know, we've, we've heard a lot of information, the, yeah, Commissioner Courtney said what I would have said about, about, you know, the freedom to choose, right? I mean, I think you're part of what we're, we're thinking about here is, you know, the freedom to, to, you have, have environmental health and, and physical health. The, you, other things that we've heard tonight, you, we've heard a lot from people who say, look, in my existing workflow, electric equipment does not work. And we've heard a lot from people who say, yeah, in a different workflow, electric equipment works great, right? And this, you know, tells me, you know, why it is that we, we actually need legislation, right? Like, you, you legislate because people don't voluntarily change their workflow, right? They don't. You legislate when you say, look, this is something that's important, something that you have to do. And then what happens is people get surprised when they change their workflow, and they're like, well, wait, this, this actually works, right? You have to legislate when a individual company cannot change its workflow because they're at a competitive disadvantage with other companies who are not. But if everyone is doing the same thing, and they're on a level playing field, right, then it makes sense. You, we have seen or heard that, you know, concerns about costs going up, but we have, you know, Jerry Jacobs, who spoke, who, you know, wouldn't have said this about himself, but he's a world-class empirical sociologist, like world-class. This is the guy who collects data like this for a living. He's really good at it, and what he finds is cross-sectionally, places with full, already electric leaf blower bans are no more expensive, right, for, for, you know, landscaping services than what we have in Lower Merion currently, right? So, so how could that be? If they're pure communities? Well, you know, either landscapers are taking on a chin, or they have found a way to make this work, right? And I'm a, you know, a believer in, in, in the market that people, people do that. You know, I don't quite trust Jerry, even though I think very highly of him, so I checked my 83-year-old mother about what happened in Lexington with, and she posted to the list serve. She said, did people's landscaping costs go up, right? And yes, one person responded that their landscaping cost had gone up 20%. And three people said that they had not gone up. One had their costs had gone down, right? That is a less scientific sample than Jerry's, but it's consistent. So, so, so something is happening in the hundreds of places that have already done this, that make it work, right? Even though we are nervous here or fearful here, like, it is working in other places. And so, this is a benefit of not being first, right? On one hand, we would like to be first, but the benefit of not being first is that, is that we've found, people have found a way to make it work. And I'm a big believer in, you know, we should not impose cost on our neighbors. We should not do. We should be good neighbors, right? We should do the things that make ourselves quieter, not say, I'm going to make my neighbor listen to noise because it's going to be cheaper for me, right? And we should not, you know, like spill gasoline because, you know, two-stroke engines just put raw gasoline and oil out, right? And they, you know, we wouldn't do that. We wouldn't dump oil on our neighbor's lawns, but, but we use the gas-powered leaf blowers by them, right by them. And so, and so we should be good neighbors. And so, I continue to support this. I think it is important legislatively to give people guidance for, for what they should expect coming down the pike. Okay. So, so with that, we have an amendment on the table. It is Commissioner Rossman's amendment. And if you vote for the amendment, then what you're doing is you're going back to the original staff plan, right, which was just the two seasons, you know, in perpetuity and consistent, you know, reconsidered at some date in the future. If you vote against the amendment, we're back with the 2-3 phase-out that we came in tonight with, okay? So, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Okay, one, two, three, four. Okay, all those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, so, so the amendment fails. Okay. So, we are now on to the ordinance, and it has not been amended. Any further comment on the ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of the ordinance, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Did I get that right, Jody?
No.
Commissioner Grant did not raise his hand for that. Okay. All those opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay, that means no abstentions. That motion passes 10 to port. Okay. That was a lot of work. Thank you, everyone. The, the work has, the, just, just started. That was a vote to. That was a vote to advertise, which means that we do this again on November 19th. If it passes, that is also just the start of the work, because some of the things that have been discussed here, like other communities, whether it's rebates or both-buy programs or whatever, other communities did after the passage of an ordinance. Right? So, there may be additional things that this board wants to consider. We are now on to item 16 on our agenda, page 40 of your packet, which is an adoption of an ordinance, chapter 107, official map vacating Bliss Street. I'm going to make a motion for an ordinance to amend the official map of, sorry, this is an ordinance to amend the official map of streets of the Township of Lower Merion, adopted pursuant to the provisions of the Code of the Township of Lower Merion, Chapter 107, entitled Official Map, to vacate and abandon a portion of that certain right-of-way known and designated as Bliss Street, also known as River Road, 33 feet wide from Old Crawford Road, easterly the distance of 866, and 26/100 feet, more or less, to its termination in the Township of Lower Merion. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement of a stated meaning of the Board of Commissioners, held September 17th, 2025, and duly advertised in the October 5th, 2025 edition of the Main Line Times in suburban. So, I need to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 4318. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Kramer. And I was smiling, because this is the first time in my life I have seen the number 866.26, followed by the words, "more or less." Okay. Any questions on this little, this digital bit of road that we are going to get rid of? Okay. That's a roll call vote for this.
For the actual ordinance, 4318.
More.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Ms. Zepski.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yep.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Dr. Rossman.
Hi.
Mr. Stevenson.
Hi.
Mr. Waylon.
Yes.
Mr. Woodruff.
Yes.
Mr. Zell.
Hi.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Okay. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Okay. And we are now on to new business. I know Commissioner Grimes has some new business. Commissioner Grimes?
Yes, I do, and there's a slide, there it is. I would like to, I hope the board would recognize our colleague, Commissioner Rossman, who is going to be inducted into the Alumni Association of Cheltenham High School Hall of Fame at a ceremony on November 7th. I believe that there are three graduates of Cheltenham High School on this board. I would note, he is the only one that is, that is, will be inducted, and probably the only one who will ever be inducted. Into the Cheltenham Hall of Fame. Just briefly, because we don't want to be here till midnight, I will not read all of the nice things they say about him. But, for those who didn't believe he had a career or a life before he joined the board, the Alumni Association has recognized that he built a remarkable career defined by innovation, leadership, and service, leaving an indelible mark on the field of dentistry while improving the lives of countless individuals. So, the ceremony will be on November 7th at Cheltenham High School, and I just wanted to congratulate him and bring this to the board's attention, and hope my colleagues will as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevenson was with Cheltenham High School for eight years.
But he finally graduated.
Okay. Any other new business? So, Commissioner Gillis-Cramer.
I just want to remind everybody that November 4th is Election Day. Please make a plan to vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business?
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.